City of Flint City Council Meeting Sponsored by the Flint City Council. Broadcasting on WFOV 92.1 LPFM Flint on Sundays from noon to noon. And on YouTube, a livestream sponsored by the Flint Pipe Fritters Union Locals 370s, encouraging us to hire locals. Facebook livestream sponsored by the Paul H. and Angela R. Herring Fund, determined to make a difference. Thank you for watching.
I had with the total budget for the state this year. It's nothing we'll be able to live off of. And I would ask you to think about this. Think of all the places you can go into our community and smell cigarette smoke. You're gonna be able to do that with marijuana. So you'll be in a park. Maybe a family will be pushing their young child down the sidewalk in a stroller. And someone will be in front of them, smoking a joint. Maybe you'll be in front of our courthouse and smell it. Because people certainly smoke cigarettes in front of our courthouse, right here on Saginaw Street. So I would urge council and constituents who may talk to, to vote no on this. It can't be just about the revenue. Because if it is, we've got three of the big sins covered already. I'll call them sins. Three of the big vices right now, if this passes. One is cigarette smoking, raises tax revenue. Two is alcohol, raises tax revenue. The legalization of recreational marijuana is three. It'll raise revenue. The only thing left that I can think of, think about this, is prostitution. We could have brothels in our community all over. Imagine the revenue that that would raise. So you could actually smoke a joint, go have a little sex. Get done with that. Have a little drink of maybe some cognac, smoke a cigarette, relax. Call it a day. Imagine the revenue we could raise. Think about it. It can't be just about the revenue. No one's talking about the negative effects. And we've seen in states where they have legalized it, where accidents have increased. Not accidents just in general, but accidents from the use of recreational marijuana. So I recommend you to vote no on one, because we will be going down that slippery slope. Think about prostitution next, okay? It's legal in Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Maroni, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Arthur Woodson.
Mr. Woods.
How you doing? Uh, I'm gonna start off by saying, man, y'all have been doing a magnificent job for the past couple of meetings. I hope I'm not saying anything that's gonna jinx, jinx the council, you know? But, uh, y'all have been doing a great job. I mean, getting out of here early on time and everything, so, you know, I like to say, great job. You know, we could speak bad about you, but we don't ever tell, tell you when you're doing a great job, you know? So I would like to lead off with that. I also want to talk, while y'all are having investigative hearings, you should also try to get DHHS down here too. And ask them to start sending money down here, and ask them to change the policies. Because everybody in the city of Flint has been affected with this water. And every time something comes in here, it's always for, not against it, but it's for six-year-olds or seniors. What about the people in the middle? The people in the middle was poisoned, water heater has to be leaking or ineffective in order for somebody to get it, plus they have to have an income, medical, you know? We allowed Governor Snyder set the narrative here, where it's all about the lead. Well, we had TTHM, carcinogens, pathogens, E. coli, you name it. We had a cocktail in this water. Just, uh, what, the past three weeks? I know there's somebody that you know have passed away in their house from respiratory failure, pneumonia, or something in the past couple of weeks. They're not telling us that Legionnaires at an uptick right now. Pneumonia is on an uptick right now. Everything is happening, and it reminds me of 2014, when we was doing four funerals a week. I mean, I went to, what, three funerals, and one of them was my cousin. And one was my aunt, and both of them had pneumonia. And then I was diagnosed with pneumonia, uh, two weeks ago. Because I, I mean, I ain't catching it until I was up in McClan, visiting her, and she had it. It's upsetting that, that things are happening around here in the city and county, and people are not paying attention to it. We have more than just lead. They say the water crisis is over. It's not. We haven't even dealt with the health part of it. The health part is gonna be worse than the lead, the TTHMs, and everything else. You have multiple melanoma, you have leukemia, you have non-Hodgins'. You have all these different things going on that's gonna affect the people's health here in Flint. And we have to do something about it now and get in front of it. So you need to bring DHHS up in here and tell them to start sending more money for people with chemotherapy, send some, uh, doctors in here that specialize in cancer. And, uh, you know, make sure that our public health person is going to the hospital, asking them to do viral respiratory, uh, testing, sputum samples, and influenza testing. Because all the doctors are not doing that, and that should be the number one thing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Madam Clerk.
Our last speaker is Mr. Quincy Murphy, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, Quincy Murphy, first, I want to thank you guys for, um, talking about the Jefferson School, um, situation. Um, hopefully, it'll get moved to special affairs or council, so where you guys could eventually vote on it. Because it's been under limbo for a long time. And I don't see why we need to wait for six houses in order for the school to move forward, because it's been on agenda for a long time. So hopefully, you guys be able to move on that. We want to do some things over there, but it's kinda hard to move, and you don't really have the school completely. Um, secondly, I just want to thank the mayor and her administration and the council. The State of the, uh, the Mayor of State of the City address was awesome. I attended it. I brought my mother out, um, with me. She was kinda, uh, depressed, because as you guys know, my sister passed, and she wasn't getting out the house. So I asked her to come to the Capitol with me. And we didn't know, we was going in with the unexpected, we didn't know what to expect. But to just listen to that speech, and to be outside of city council chambers, and to be in the Capitol, because I had some reluctance about being in the Capitol. But once I went in there, it looked nice. That was my first time in there. Um, I listened to the words that was coming out of her mouth. I listened to her, um, say that General Motors was, um, moving back to the Flint Water, which is revenue. You know, um, I heard her talk about Dewey Park, yay, nah. Um, so, but nah, just the speech and the accomplishments that she made over. I was really, um, impressed. I encouraged the council president, whoever be the next council president, and for the next year, to consider doing at least three city council meetings in the community. Instead of just coming down here all the time, maybe y'all should get outside of the council chambers and move outside in the different wards. And for the first year, y'all may do, pick three different people wards to have it at the Brennan Center or something, um, over there in the second ward or the first ward. Just do like, do three per year. Don't, don't do a lot, because I'm, I'm quite sure it takes a lot to move this stuff to setup. I don't know the process. I don't know if, I think you guys did do it before. I really would encourage getting outside of the council chambers and going out in the community and doing these council meetings in y'all wards, the ninth ward, eighth, whatever, y'all decide. The first year, do three, the next year, do the next ward, you know, just move it around. Um, the other one I wanted to talk about is the Ethics and Accountability Board. And I know, um, my time is up, but I'm finna wrap it up. Um, they ha, I went to their meeting. They having, um, problems and issues being able to tap into that $250,000 that was created for the abusment department. So there are some, just some, um, kinda budgetarial, um, expenses that they need to get themselves set up. I would consider, I would suggest that you guys make, do a referral tonight or something to put that on the finance committee, and have them present you guys a itemized budget on what they need to use, and y'all do a budget amendment to allow them to utilize some of that abusment, um, department budget to help them get going. Because right now, you guys are not paying a director for the abusment. Y'all not paying a human relations director, so that money is just sitting there. And by the time they do get to hire one, that money still, they not gonna be able to eat up all that money, and eventually, y'all gonna end up taking the money and moving it, um, next year, because it ain't been spent. So I would suggest that you guys look at doing a budget amendment within that department, or use some money to put, give them some money, and then once they hire the abus, just replace that money that is just gonna be sitting there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President, we do have one more speaker.
Mm-hmm.
The person of Reverend Stacey Swann. Could you come forward, please?
On your order.
What's your point, Councilman?
You know, I don't mind suspending the rules, but our rules say that slip must be in before that meeting start, so I just witness that. So I would move that we suspend the order and allow, um, the speaker to speak.
There's a motion to, to suspend the order to allow the speaker to speak. Is there a second?
Mr. President.
Councilman Davis.
I second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes.
Any other members of the public want to speak tonight before we close this part out? If not, I'd be supporting the motion for this speaker.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I was just wondering if the speaker, um, who has been and was here during special affairs, if maybe he didn't realize that there was a slip that he had to fill out?
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs? Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mace?
Yes.
Voiding this, if yes, one, no, to allow the pastor to speak.
Okay, proceed, sir.
Good evening to the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Uh, I come here tonight to plead with you. I don't know if the city council collectively can make a statement as it relates to the legalization of marijuana. But if you cannot, I come here tonight to plead with you as individuals, particularly of your parents, to take a stand against this. I want to tell you quickly that I have a two-year-old. His name is Christian Michael Swift. My son has tested positive for marijuana five times now in the past year. Because when he's not in my care, he's in the care of someone who has a medical marijuana card. The significance of that is, is that the police department, and the family courts, and our local agencies are turning the other way because of partisan politics and things that have nothing to do with children's rights. And so I ask you, what do you think is going to happen to our children? If we're already dropping the ball and protecting our kids from irresponsible medical marijuana users? Look to Colorado. In the state of Colorado, they have an epidemic of children who are being exposed to, toxic exposure to marijuana. This is not about what party you belong to. I'm not a Republican or Democrat. This is about, do you care, do we care about our children? Don't listen to what the politicians are telling you. Look at what's happened to our children in Seattle, and Colorado, and other states, where they've done this already. So I'm here to tell you as a parent that I am not the only one that's affected. And what about, what about a community that's already reeling from chronic unemployment when it comes to teenagers? What message are we sending to our young people? Who are already struggling to get jobs, struggling to pass drug tests to work in construction industries, when the state government is saying that we need more shuttle-ready jobs for kids? Isn't that what they're saying? But our kids can't get the jobs because they can't pass the drug test with our current laws in place. So what are we doing when we're saying that we're willing to open the doors in our community to more drugs? Ladies and gentlemen, I suggest to you tonight, we don't need more drugs in the city of Flint. We need more jobs. We don't need more narcotics of any nature in the city. We need higher literacy rates. We don't need more narcotics in this city. We need stronger families. So don't listen to the politicians or the pundits who are saying about the revenue. Have, have you ever heard the saying, "I don't want to preach to you"? What is it that a man should gain the whole world and lose his soul? All money, as we say in the hood, isn't good money, ladies and gentlemen. All money isn't good money. And so I wind down, again, I don't really know what the city council can do if you can take a position collectively. Maybe you can't, but each and every one of you live in this city. Each and every one of you, I know most of you, you have children. I know all of you care about this community, and if I didn't believe that, I wouldn't be here tonight. So I'm appealing to you as a parent, I beg of you, I plead with you as a parent, to go and research for yourself the facts that I laid before you tonight. I will be back again, and you'll be seeing me put out videos and articles as we get a little closer to the election. Because it's typically, it's, the old saying is, the last thing we see or hear is the first thing we remember, right? So I want to wait till we get a little closer to the election, to put out some of the things I have. But thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight, and I beg of you, please think about it. God bless you.
Thank you. Well, we're at the point now where we have two minutes. Two minutes, right, do they know? One time, two minutes to respond to our speakers. Who would like to go first? Uh, I saw Councilman Briggs has had to apologize to our last speaker. I didn't understand, I didn't understand the vote. Okay, I'd like to apologize to you. Then I saw, uh, Councilwoman Worthing say.
Um, I appreciate the comments about medical marijuana, um, or no, recreational marijuana. I've been so much into medical marijuana lately. Um, but I guess my mindset is, people are gonna do what they're gonna do, and regulating that is really hard to do. Um, there's so many arguments for that, and I'm not saying what's right or what's wrong, and I'm not, um, gonna say that there needs to be legislation for this. But even prostitution, Mr. Del, Del Maroni, it's just overcome our streets, and it's unwanted. And maybe if they had a place, and it was legalized, and rules and regulations, maybe it wouldn't be such a problem. Listen, you don't have to agree with me. I'm a lover of Christ, and I have two young children. Um, and I'm also a Democrat, so figure that out. I just, I just think when we've done things like, uh, prohibition, um, and other restrictive things, that it hasn't worked out in our favor. History has shown us that. So I am in favor, though, of laws of, uh, like drunk driving laws, laws where if the medical marijuana use or, or just recreational use is, um, is affecting someone, uh, because there are people with allergies and sensitivities to that, that it be restricted to places where the public isn't, uh, you know, subjected to that. Because I get it. Cigarette smoke, it was everywhere. Bowling alleys, you couldn't go as a kid without coming home smelling like smoke, and I'm thankful that we don't have to do that. Smoking is legal, but there are rules now in place to protect us. And I would hope that we would work and strive as, who knows what will happen? Uh, but as, as this legislation, uh, you know, passes or not passes, I still hope that we come to some regulations statewide that will protect those, uh, children and those who, uh, have allergies and things like that. And then another, just one more thing, can we put that ombudsman, uh, finance discussion on, as a special order on finance? Okay, through the chair to Mr. Mace.
Councilman Mace, do you have any objections of that going on the discussion of the, of the ombudsman for the finance? Okay.
Thank you.
That's ordered without objection. Right. Any other council, uh, Councilwoman Galloway?
Thank you. Thank you to the, um, speakers that spoke. Um, I would just say to parents, to really do research, um, the Michigan Municipal League, um, did a, um, one and a half hour presentation during general session in 2017. The convention was in Holland, and actually, there was a speaker from Colorado who was an advocate for, um, legalizing recreational marijuana. Um, but her position had changed, because what she noted is that the increase of fifth and sixth graders and the use that they did. Um, she showed video of Sharpie colored markers being changed into pipes to smoke marijuana. Um, she had experienced children that had gone to the hospital because they had gotten the gummy bears or the, the chewables. Now, there is supposed to be something in legislation that is no longer allowing them to make those chewable things look so much like those things. Um, they noticed that the increase of marijuana use in high school, 11th and 12th graders, had increased to almost 80%. And so, you know, you're gonna have to be a population that becomes, one, um, aware of what's going on, and you need to be talking to your children. And you need, if your children are, are expressing anything, some of this stuff may not be ADHD. But our children are around so many things, like you said, your child tested for something that you know that they didn't get. And, and we're not thinking about secondhand smoke where this is concerned, and so I get it. So all I'm saying is, as parents, if you care, you better start figuring out what to do where your children are concerned.
Okay, uh, Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish I had more time. I want to speak to Mr. Stacy Strump, as well as, uh, Mr. Chris Del Maroni. Maroni. God don't bless mess. This here ain't nothing but another genocide to young folks. If you want to get rid of people, and I mean, poor folks, white, black, blue, green, this legislation is already set in place. All we could ever be is a consumer. We already got no jobs. We have nothing. Now we down to, we can't even do a strip party ticket voting. We don't even have the decency no more to even, when it comes to marijuana, they'll make sure that get you to the podium. But when it comes to voting, on my side of town, we have this red sign that say, "Go vote." We're not even competent enough to get the decencies they have everywhere else to be educated on who to vote for. Now, we could put a nail in our coffin, we do destroy our kids, going and coming, with a plant poisoning of our residents. Now you adding poison with marijuana. Kids is already the one, we can make choices. It's not right to put this on, uh, uh, young minors talking about some marijuana. This is a Sodom and Gomorrah. We got girls joining Boy Scout. We got churches on every corner. How long we gonna keep playing?
But how am I supposed to get?
This is a joke.
How am I supposed to get, what line in?
Now, it might be funny until God's real, not only blessing, but he got their judgment. And it's coming. America's under judgment. Billions of dollars with hurricanes. Keep on playing, Flint. You gonna see a judge come on this city you ain't never seen before. We gotta stand up, either for God or you're not. We got churches with politicians going inside of their churches, and God's pulpit leading people astray. We can't just keep doing this. Somebody gotta stand up here, either be for God or you're against him. Be shamed of me, I'll be shamed of you. I had other stuff to say. Mr. Arthur Woodson, thank you for the compliment. Mr. Murphy, you absolutely right. We need to redeem much as we can, because that movement called the master plan is moving, and this is a part of it.
Yeah, hi.
Thank you.
Any other council people?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman May?
Oh, hey, Doc.
Yeah, we had, um, five speakers that sound like Ms. Worthing further down on the agenda. I think I heard that writers gonna talk about this some more in the discussion. In these two minutes.
Yeah, yeah, like right now, I'm working.
Two people talked about proposal one, Chris Del Maroni, and the last speaker. I would say to you sitting in this seat, I don't know who you're talking to around the city. And I don't know who got custody of your child. But I don't try to take all the extra work, particularly if it ain't in my ward. But if you come up here and say that a minor child is testing positive, and you ain't got custody, and you ain't petition the circuit court, then if you petition the circuit court, and it's true, and you can prove it, somebody gonna get a referral to the police department. And if they don't, if it happen in the city of Flint, let me know. And I'll talk to some folks. Complaints should always be taken and investigated and followed up. So I don't want to mix apples and oranges. I see on Facebook, little kids, parents giving them weed to smoke. I also know that gay give them alcohol and watch the little babies stumble around. Some stuff in this world, we just take control. All I can do is try to go to heaven. I'm not gonna probably go to the devil for voting. Yes, on proposal one, I'm probably not gonna go to the devil for doing ordinances and legislation that, um, regulates recreational marijuana. Or medical marijuana. I might go to the devil, and I'll be saying, Lord Jesus, you sent me to the devil for that legislation, and maybe I'm worthy to go. But I'm gonna be praying and asking for forgiveness all along the way, hoping I can make it. Um, in two minutes, we can discuss this stuff. I would ask for about a couple minutes anyways. You don't hardly hear folks come up to the mic and say the council is doing a good job. I might say it on Monday and change my mind on Wednesday, so we appreciate that. About the good job, Mr. Woodson. The water crisis is not over. We will proceed with further discussion on these matters at the end of this agenda. I'll always good to see you, Chris Del Maroni, Mr. Woodson, and Quincy Murphy. We will continue to talk. Thank you.
City of Flint City Council Meeting Sponsored by the Flint City Council. Broadcasting on WFOV 92.1 LPFM Flint on Sundays from noon to noon. And on YouTube, a livestream sponsored by the Flint Pipe Fritters Union Locals 370s. And on YouTube, a live stream sponsored by the Flint Pipe Fitters Union, Locals Three Seventies, encouraging us to hire local. Facebook livestream sponsored by the Paul Agent Angela R. Herring Fund, determined to make a difference. Thank you for watching.
Politicians and unofficial communications, Madam Clerk?
There's only one.
Okay, I would encourage my, uh, uh, colleagues to look at one eight zero five four five as someone's United States District Court. Notice of Simmons and the Civil Action received September twenty-first, uh, regarding Kristen Wells versus City of Flint. Add all case number, and then it goes on. Are there any other communications from the mayor, Madam Clerk? That are here, we, we see them here.
One communication, traffic engineering.
Okay. And appointments?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Galloway?
I move approval of the appointment to the Genesee County nine-one-one Consortium Commission, Rodney Stephen Branch, AKA Steve Branch.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to approve, uh, appointment number one eight zero five four three of Rodney Stephen Branch, AKA Steve Branch. Councilman Griggs, there's been a motion to move and it's been properly second. Is there any discussion on the appointment?
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
Clearly this appointment ain't part of the thirteen, is it?
I don't think so.
Under it. Um, yeah, I'll be supporting this motion for Mr. Branch, who is also our city administrator. Nine-one-one used to be owned and operated by the City of Flint. And so now it's run out there, if I'm not mistaken, out in the state police post. I think that's where they stationed that. We lost that operation during the emergency manager law. I wasn't in favor of it. So anybody who we can get on there, but to have the day-to-day operator of the city, Mr. Rodney Stephen Branch, I'll be supporting it. And I will continue to say the name Rodney Stephen Branch because I just know him as Steve Branch. But now I got a whole lot of respect because I know Rodney Stephen Branch. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The bill is nine yes, zero no on one eight zero five four three.
Right. This brings us to our master resolution. Uh, what is the council's pleasure?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Fields?
I would like to move the master resolution, including add-ons number one and two.
Point of, point of, point of information.
What's your point?
Would you mean add-on one eight zero five one seven point one?
It's already on there. We just have to move it to point one.
Yeah, we.
Cause it wasn't but one add-on.
Just one add-on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there were two. So.
One of them wasn't amended.
Uh, what's your point, Councilman Garrett?
There was two. One had to do with proposal two, without proposal two in it. And the second one was the money for the police department.
But that was, that was, that was a point one. Move it to point one.
Right?
No, you're not. But it's okay. We got you. No, that's what we're trying to correct here, is that, that it was not, that it was just one add-on. But we moved the one eights, one eight zero five one seven, made it to point one.
Point of information?
Yes, ma'am.
On the one concerning the police, we amended that. So that was considered an add-on even though it was amended?
Right.
It was considered a point one.
It was considered a point one. Yeah, we moved it to a point one.
Do I have, does someone have to make note of that when they move a master resolution when the number has been changed?
I was going to. But I got your back. We got, we got, we got it. So, so now let's hear your motion again.
I moved to, uh, God, I'm tired.
To move the?
I moved the master resolution, including first add-on. I can't remember.
And the point one.
And the point one.
If I could indicate the title of the.
That's right. Go ahead.
Unless Mr. Mays, because he's the sponsor.
All right, okay.
You wanna go ahead and mention the title? If you don't mind. Okay. It's a resolution supporting the establishment of an independent citizens' redistricting commission. This is at the state level and we're not talking about supporting the ballot issue per se, but this is the concept.
And this is add-on number one. Absolutely. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Garrett?
I second that motion.
It's been moved and properly second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Mays?
The add-on number one. Uh, you know, we are supporting with this resolution an independent citizens' redistricting commission. Kinda that process and the context of this resolution supporting the establishment of an independent citizens' redistricting, um, commission, in my opinion, can help knock down all this gerrymandering and give us a better, um, proportion of seats in both the state and in Washington, both state and federal. So I'll be supporting that and I won't separate it. Um, the resolution that was amended, one eight zero five one seven point one, I would like to separate that.
All right. Any other separations? Councilwoman, uh, Fieldy?
Um, add-on number one, as Mr. Mays said, is, um, or Mr. Garrett, uh, was about, uh, proposal two, uh, without proposal two in it. So, uh, the council is supporting, uh, independent citizens' redistricting commission. Uh, and I'm definitely voting yes for, uh, proposal two and three, which, uh, both supports the vote. So proposal two, um, will help put a stop to gerrymandering. And proposal three is, um, to help make it easier to vote, no reason, absentee vote. Uh, there's a couple other things I can't think of right now. I knew it more later. Anyways, both are really good proposals. So regardless of how you feel about recreational marijuana, there are ups and downs on that one. I totally get both sides. I really do. Uh, and, and I do believe that needs to be regulated heavily if passed. However, proposal two and three, hopefully we all can get behind on, and support, uh, our, our vote. And so I highly recommend, it's fifteen days away that we go to the polls,
Okay.
that we vote. Well, I meant, I highly recommend that you go vote. So, um, in fifteen days. So, um, that's what add-on number one is. And other than that, I have no discussion.
Councilman?
Mr.?
And Mr.?
Mr. President? I would like to separate one eight zero five four zero. That's the Rubbish Collection.
Okay.
Thing. And then it would also be, it would be connected with one eight zero five four four, five four four. Those two I wanna separate. Is those the only two resolutions dealing with the Republic Services Contract?
Mm-hmm.
I need them two separated.
All right. Any other separate, Councilwoman? Councilwoman Field, uh, Councilwoman Galloway?
Okay, so, um, well, it seems like we'll be doing everything piece by piece. Is there, um, I would like to separate one eight zero five four two?
Which one hasn't been separated?
That's a good question.
Can we figure out?
Let me ask the resolution.
Is there any other separations?
Point of information. Which ones have we separated?
You separated one eight zero five one seven point one. You separated one eight zero five four two. You separated one eight zero five four four.
Oh, thank you.
And one eight.
And five four.
Four zero also.
Wait a minute, where is that now?
First page.
I didn't, I didn't announce that one?
No.
Okay, well, yep, we did separate that one as well. Okay?
Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
Now, if I may, um, and maybe I may not, but that, um, one eight zero five four one dealing with a five million dollars as it relates to the Department of Health and Human Services and then lead service line stuff, we just had a speaker kinda speak on the Department of DHS. I don't know if that was Mr. Murphy or somebody. But I would like to, if I may, I'm not separating it, but I, I looked at that this weekend and I need a brief explanation on that before I feel comfortable not separating it and passing it. And I wanna know if Mr. Newsom can give me that.
Mr. Newsom, are you able to give us any information on one eight zero five four one?
If he can't, and Mr. Branch or anybody can, that's five million dollars we finna vote on. I think I'm reading that right. That's a lot of money.
Point of information?
What's your point?
And if, is it okay if Mr. Newsom shares when this came before council for discussion? This particular resolution?
In committee?
Came in committee.
Let's see.
It was in committee. We, we, we made sure to submit this one on time. This is the two thousand, can you hear, can you hear me now? This is the two thou, fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen version of CHIP. Um, just a reminder, you all passed the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen version, um, because of some issues a little late, right before the end of the fiscal year. But now we're ahead of the game. Um, as soon as it was approved by DHHS in Lansing, um, beginning of October, um, you know, roughly the beginning of October, we bought it before, before, before this body. So this is the five million dollar CHIP funds for service line replacement.
So, Mr. President? May I yield to Ms. Galloway?
Go right ahead.
Uh, Mr. Newsom, please, um, understand, I remember when we approved the grant.
Right.
I don't remember discussing this particular thing, this saying that, um, that any unspent grant funds, you know what I mean? And so that's where my question lies. I know that we accepted it.
Yeah.
We adopted it into the budget. I'm talking about what, what this resolution says is going to be done with the money. I don't remember us having the conversation specifically around this. And so did I miss that? Was that also in that conversation?
Well, it would, it would have been a part of the conversation in committee. I just don't think you all separated this particular resolution out in committee last Wednesday. So, um, you know, this was part of that, um, of what was submitted. This was not walked on. This was in your package, um, as of last Wednesday. So I'm not sure why that was not brought up, but let me explain that a little bit. Um, now, as you, just so council is aware, this funding is specific for service line replacement for CHIP eligible homes. So homes where children are eligible for the child health insurance program at the federal level. And so for, just, just a little bit of service, just a little bit of background, what happens in the field, um, during service line replacement? If there's a home that's CHIP eligible, um, that home, the service line replacement for that particular home is funded out of the CHIP bucket of money. We like to use that money first because it's only available to homes that are CHIP eligible. And so we might not necessarily exhaust that money for service line replacement, um, for the balance of this year and for next year, uh, because not every, we might not have five million dollars worth of, um, CHIP eligible service line replacement to do. So that's what that alludes to. Some of that money, we might not exhaust this funding. We don't know. Um, considering that we have less lead in these out, you know, in these later phases. And in addition to that, um, roughly speaking, twenty, twenty-five percent of the homes already are, are, are CHIP eligible, meaning seventy-five, seventy-seven, seventy, eighty, seventy-five percent of the homes are not. So that's the reason that you see that. So we may or may not exhaust this, this funding bucket.
All right. Mr. Newsom, it also says that this is to provide lead service line and lead fixture replacement for eligible families. What is the lead fixture replacements? And how do eligible families take advantage of these funds?
So let me, I'm not going to, I don't know if Rob is here to connect and speak to that a little bit more. Program manager isn't here, but I don't know, Steve, if you wanna talk, talk about. Right, it's CHIP eligible only. I think she's asking, how do I access that?
Yeah, the resolution is saying that it's eligible for eligible families to also have lead fixture replacements. And so what defines lead fixture replacements? And how do eligible families apply for these funds to have whatever these fixtures are that need to be replaced?
So I, I'm gonna step out on a limb a little bit. This is kinda outside my wheelhouse. I think that the funding might be available for fixtures, but this, what we're using the funding for is for service line replacement. So I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to go in more detail, um, other than that.
Come on up, come on up, cause I want these questions answered.
I think that the, the question that I would have then with that is who's deciding? Like, is the grant, because lead fixture replacements, you know, what does that mean? Is that water heaters? Is that?
Let's, let's let them tell us what it is, cause your question is valid. You wanna know what it is, right?
Right.
That's very clear. Rob, uh, Benzick, if you have any information on Councilwoman Galloway's question?
But I, I wanted to add one thing.
Add as many things as you want.
No. Who decides how the pot of money is allocated?
Okay, again, as Mr. Newsom stated, it's for CHIP eligible homes only. So when they go in and do a lead service line replacement in a CHIP eligible home, they can go inside and replace the water filter, a water faucet if it's lead, uh, fixtures well. That is only for CHIP eligible homes. It can't be used in any other, any other application but for a CHIP eligible home only. So they can go in and replace the faucet filter if that faucet filter in, in that, in that home is of lead.
How do people know if their home is CHIP eligible?
They're gonna know when they come by and do the lead service line replacement. There's a listing. We get a listing every month. And they change from month to month.
Okay.
And people move around.
So we can see a list of that. And so the fixture replacements that can be replaced are their faucets?
Right.
Just their faucets?
Right, there's none include, you know.
No, no, no. I, I just wanted to understand. So you have a list that is available that has addresses on it?
Right.
So, okay. Can we?
And again, that listing is not something that we make public because it is, you're dealing with children and that information is highly confidential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Fields?
I'm glad this question has been raised because I got a call today from a constituent and I, I really wasn't sure what he was talking about. But he said he had heard, and I don't know if this is part of a news story or what, but he had heard that there was some program that each household, low-income household could get up to seven thousand dollars for replacing inside, you know, plumbing fixtures, whatever. And I said, not to my knowledge. I'd never heard of that.
Uh, wait, 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 wait. Continue.
Okay, well, uh, maybe somebody in the administration, are you aware of that? And does that have anything to do with this particular money? And then I have something else I wanna comment about this.
So I, I, I wanna research the seven thousand dollar figure. That's higher than what I'm, I'm, I'm used to. But as you may or may not know, the RAP program for, um, those residents that are eligible for, um, can participate in a home audit and receive, I believe, up to a thousand dollars potential. I have to check that number, but up to a thousand dollars, um, for, um, fix, you know, from fixing fixtures or leaky appliances or upgrading as part of their conservation funds, which is different than the relief programs, a different, um, pot of money, so to speak. So that's an additional benefit of the RAP program that's available to us through the, through the GLEW, um, grand bargain.
Okay, may I make a referral to, to have, um, that explained?
It will be, uh, it's already been requested as a special order. You can, you can.
Okay, so you'll include that particular rather than just the?
Yeah, that will be part of the presentation.
Relief. Okay.
That'll be part.
Um, one, one other comment on this. You know, one thing I'm wondering about is now here's five million more for, um, lead service line replacements. And, uh, once again, and during the investigative hearing or the hearing, okay, um, we're going to have AE. the investigative hearing or the hearing, okay, um, we're going to have AE come there and part of what I want to ask them too is, at one time, they estimated that there are only about twelve hundred more properties that actually needed lead service lines replaced. Okay, now, this is all not, you know, jiving together with this predictive model we've seen, which shows all these areas that still need to be done, and the ninety-seven million that's total available for lead service line replacement, I mean, I don't know if we're going to need this additional five million for that particular use, so, and I don't know if ultimately this money, I know that the WIN money, the state can change the use of it, and I know the legis, the Michigan legislature can change the use of some of the funding they're giving us, but I don't know if this money can be changed or if the program guidelines, it can only be used for lead service line replacement.
So, so to be clear, and I don't know if Deputy Director Fkey explained this, but just so we're clear, that ninety-seven million is part of that, that, um, settlement, right? And so, the settlement states that the state does not have to provide this money or the affairs, it has, it says the state has to make sure that this money is provided through a series of funding. So there's twenty million that came from the federal, remember the federal share of the WIN funds, the first forty million, twenty million from the state, that's forty. And then there's forty-seven million that the state has to come up with before we hit the ten million dollar contingency, which gets you to ninety-seven. That forty-seven million could be a mixture of CHIP and state money. So in theory, this five million is part of that forty-seven million that the state has to, um, provide to us. And so, I just want to be clear that when, if you read the wording of the settlement, what's been explained to me numerous times is that this is not in addition to this, the ninety-seven million, this is part of the ninety-seven million. We're supposed to use as much CHIP funding as possible, I don't know if, if, um, Amy, if Deputy Director Fkey explained it or not, but that's been made very clear to the administration that CHIP money is to be used as, and considered part of that ninety-seven million, so that's the reason.
That clarification is very helpful, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. President. Uh, Counselman Griggs?
Uh, I'm still kind of hung up on this lead fixture. Are you telling me there are faucets made out of lead? Is this what you would call pot metal? Is that the same as pot metal?
Yeah. Counselman?
Point of information.
What's your point?
Yeah, I'm hearing you call Rob Benzick up.
Well, yeah, he could come up, I want, I want, I want you to get your questions answered because I'm having, I'm, you know I'm having an issue, but, but I want you to get your questions answered. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Benzick.
Uh, Mr. President, if I can, so Counselman Griggs, um, what, what they're replacing are leaded brass fixtures, so, um, we didn't, we didn't end up with lead-free quote-unquote brass until just recent years, so many of those fixtures have a high lead, lead content of brass in them.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, Counselman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. President, through you to my colleagues as Finance Chair, what to the administration, was this our resolution discussed in Finance Committee meeting?
I believe you all did not separate it out as part of the master, as part of the master resolution in committee, but it was brought forth as a part of the arrangement.
And that's how it got from here to there.
Right.
And then I look at the agreement, the grant agreement, I think it's called.
Mm-hmm.
Now, these grants, even though they financed, um, I wouldn't care if they came in through Grants Committee, Ms. Winfrey's Committee, and was moved to finance after that or whatever, but I know we ain't got time to move them all around. But when I got the email and I was preparing, um, looking at the agenda, I seen that, um, long grant agreement that goes with this resolution, and I haven't had a chance to look at that, um, grant agreement and resolution. Let me ask you this, Mr. Newsom, how long y'all been waiting on this to, waiting on us to approve this?
I don't, I, I know we submitted it two weeks ago, almost two weeks ago, so before that.
How long ago?
Uh, probably, you know, I know we submitted it two weeks ago, this coming month, Wednes, Wednesday, so today's the twenty-fourth, the tenth.
So y'all submitted it in September, October?
October.
And they done responded this fast?
So here, here's, this is go back, I want to.
And the reason I'm asking is because I want to decide if I want to take action tonight or do I want to learn more?
Well, there, there's, I, I want to brag a little bit and say that we have been doing a lot better job with the drawdowns and the reimbursement requests for the service line replacements. I'm not, we're not quite where I want us to be, but I think we're, um, performing a lot better. But that being said, there's work that's being done and being invoiced for CHIP eligible homes, and we pretty much, we've almost caught up. So what we're saying is, any, any work that's being done now for a CHIP eligible home that's been, that's at the beginning of this fiscal year for the state, which is October first, this is on hold, we can't, we can't push this through until we have resolved to amend the budget. See what I'm saying? So the last thing I want is for us to have other delays in those reimbursement requests, which we've spent a lot of time getting that process down. Last thing I want us to do is to hold something up for another two weeks because we're waiting to amend the budget.
Yeah, my biggest fear, particularly as a new Finance Chair, my biggest fear is approving five million, ten million, twenty million, a hundred million, and ain't properly vetted and indeed my due diligence, I just have a nightmare about being a Finance Chair and on a council and reading something that I should have checked and double-checked. But in this case, maybe I'll approve it and I'm not where I need to be yet. Let me say this, um, who am I talking to? Am I talking to the administration, am I talking to council? Let me say this, Mr. Newsom, now, you told me as we move forward on the investigative hearing dealing with the flow of money and reimbursements, and this is in fact one, that about time we get in the hearing, we was gonna see some movement, and I see the smile and I've had private conversation with you. But my position is this, the position I set in, whenever you see something worth a million, five million, I don't want it passed through Finance Committee without it called to my attention, I don't want to pass it through, I know how these meetings go, cause I'm gonna catch it either in here now, send it back, so just keep in mind, I might pass it this time, but I don't want nothing over a million, five million, ten million coming through without some detailed discussion. When I seen that agreement attached that I'm getting ready to vote on now, I'm like, do I want to do that before I read the agreement? But I'm not gonna micromanage y'all.
Mm-hmm.
But I am gonna micromanage myself and my knowledge. So I didn't separate this from the master resolution, I used the opportunity to ask questions. I ain't comfortable with lack of communications, whether it's in a council meeting, a Finance Committee meeting, or if I get a phone call that a big resolution is coming. Five million dollars to me is a lot of money. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So let, let me talk about what the motion is on the floor then. The motion on the floor is for the pass of the, um, master resolution with the exceptions of those, uh, resolutions that were separated. Is that everybody's understanding? Is there any other discussion?
Point of information.
And your point is?
Could you just state what you said again?
Yes, I can do that. You separated the 1-805-17.1, you separated the 1-805-40, you separated the 1-805-42, and you separated the 1-805-44.
So, change?
Yes, ma'am. Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Orving?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no on 1-805-17.1.
Okay. So did the first separation would be 1-805-17.1? That's first separation.
Mr. President.
Counselman?
I separated this one because as we discussed it, I think, coming out of, um, Special Affairs, I understood what was said, um, but I separated it because I have listened in Special Affairs. I heard the discussion about the hundred thousand and the change from the original to seventy-three, but this seventy-three thousand will deal with the outfit and the twenty cars for radios, that's it. Okay, and so the hundred thousand would have did what?
So, just, just to re, just to remind you, originally, we needed a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We found a hundred thousand dollars, um, for jail equipment as, as Ms., as Counselman Garrett asked me to come back to you all with, with the report.
For what equipment?
So we're you, we were gonna use a hundred thousand dollars for jail equipment.
Jail equipment?
Equipment, but now we're.
Jail equipment?
Equipment.
J-A-I-L. What type of equipment was that?
So, don't ask me specifics, I can report that back to you, I don't know the specific, unfortunately.
So the jail equipment will be on hold?
Correct.
And we talk about it later?
Later.
This is just the outfit, the new cars, have the new cars arrived yet?
So there, let me, let me back up a minute, there're two, remember, there're two parts to that resolution. It was the data migration.
Right.
For the cold cases of fifty-three thousand, and then there was another hundred and twenty, almost four thousand dollars for the upfitting of the vehicles. That's a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So I'm saying is, is that top priority is the fifty thousand dollars, so we use, remember that?
For the cold cases?
Right, for the cold cases. We use the first fifty thousand of that hundred thousand for the cold cases.
The first fifty of the hundred thousand?
Of the hundred.
The hundred thousand ain't here no more, is it?
Well, now, we, that's what we're saying, we're gonna repurpose.
It's on hold.
Right, we're repurposing that because we're not getting the jail equipment.
But the seventy-three thousand, none of that'll go to a cold case?
So that, that's where I'm going, so let's.
Let's see, I just want to know what is the seventy-three thousand?
It's for the balance of the money for the MDTs, for the.
For the what?
The balance of the money.
For what? The balance of what money?
For the upfitting of the cruisers.
And it's come out at seventy-three thousand?
Right.
And that'll pay the cruisers?
That'll pay the cruisers.
And sometime in the future, we'll talk about the cold cases and the jail stuff, is that a fair way of saying it?
Yes.
So this seventy-three finished the cruisers?
Finished.
Have the cruisers arrived yet?
No.
There's twenty of them?
There's supposed to be twenty of them, that's.
When is the expected arrival of twenty police group?
Sometime next year, I think first quarter or second quarter.
Next year?
Right.
But we moving the money to outfit them now?
You have to move them in advance, that's the problem, you have to, you have to upfit way in advance and get this stuff ordered.
All right, I've supported it with that information.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Huey, so can, would, would it be okay to, um, have this as a discussion because in looking at the old resolution?
Mm-hmm.
And looking at this one, um, it said that the new record systems on the other one was only fifty-three thousand six hundred?
Yes.
And that the, um, purchase of the twenty MDTs was a cost of one hundred and twenty?
Right.
So you talked about the displacement for the, um, I mean, the, the hundred and twenty was for twenty new cruisers?
Right.
You talked about the hundred, but now you've added more to the data than was on the previous?
No.
Oh, I'm looking at it.
Fifty-three, fifty-three plus one hundred, so fifty-three for the data migration, plus a hundred and twenty for the, um, terminals, for the upfitting, gets you to a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, right? Hundred and seventy-three and six, I believe, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, take out a hundred that we found, if we're gonna repurpose, that was gonna go to jail equipment, so take that away and you're left with seventy-three thousand six hundred, that's what's in front of you.
Right, but Huey?
Uh-huh.
That's not what the resolution reads.
What is the resolution?
The resolution reads purchases to transfer police records from State Records Management System, SRMS, to the New World Record System at a cost of fifty-three thousand six hundred?
Yes.
And to purchase twenty mobile data terminal MDTs at a cost of a hundred and twenty for the twenty new cruisers.
Yeah.
That's why I was confused.
Okay.
So now it's?
Fifty-three plus, so let's do it again, fifty?
I just, maybe I'm just confused by the way that this is worded.
Well, the sum total of all the purchases, a hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred, right?
Yes.
Is that, okay, so what I'm saying is, what you don't have, the number that you don't have in front of you is a hundred thousand dollars.
So the equipment for the jail wasn't included in here?
That's right.
And that's what's confusing me?
We're, we're using equipment instead of taking money out of fund balance.
Right.
General fund balance, we're repurposing a hundred thousand dollars from, um, from the purchase of that jail equipment instead.
Right, I just, I'm sorry, it just wasn't on here, that's why I was confused.
I understand. And that was an old resolution before we found this hundred thousand, so hopefully that clears it up.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing, uh, Madam Clerk on 1-70, 1-805-17.1.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Orving?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no on 1-805-17.1.
Okay, the next separation will be 1-805-40.
Mr. President.
Counselman Mays?
Yeah, the reason I separated 1-805-40 and 1-805-44.
Counselman, would you, would you, you want to talk about them at the same time?
I think I'm gonna kind of.
Okay.
Talk about it in general because they, and then we'll sort it out, but I see large numbers there, particularly in 1-805-44, and, um, the numbers are not as large in 1-805-40, but I think what is important is the language that I read as it relates to these resolutions. Um, I've seen the guy from Republic here.
Mm-hmm.
He's now gone in the res, okay, so we'll see if he shows back up, Mr. President, but what I'm gathering is this, I'm gathering that this is a long-term contract. This ain't a year extension, I've seen many years in there. So, Mr. Newsom, Mr. Branch, somebody tell Counselman Mays what this contract is and what's being proposed because we usually put stuff out for bid, and this one ain't going out for bid. This one is extending something in the terms of the old contract. Now, I might or might not be against, um, extending it, but I want to talk, and I'm gonna ask to talk to Republic because I'm getting calls, and we circle back on Miss Garbage Pickup, but then I still remember when we was in negotiations before, some things that was talked about and promised. So I can't speak for my colleagues, but a garbage contract is a major piece of business.
Oh, yeah.
And I know that I ain't discussed it the way I want, so I'll see if I move on it today, why and why not, or will I try to postpone and vet it and bring the parties in? Now, I'm willing to sit here, it's only eight-thirty, but I'm willing, I'm, I mean, ain't no motion on the floor, I'm, I'm dead serious about garbage service in the city of Flint. I'm dead serious about this outsourced garbage when we used to own garbage trucks that's moving around. So this is a serious matter, and I'm gonna see how serious my colleagues is want to get, even if it come to suspending the routes. Mr. Newsom, tell me in general, how long is this contract we finna vote? Is it a contract? Is it short-term, long-term? What's the total amount and what do we expect to get?
It, it is a long-term contract, uh, Counselman Mays, and I do agree with you, this one definitely should have went out to bid. The problem that we had was finding enough potential suppliers in lieu of what happened, you know, two years, you know, two years ago, whenever, when this last came up to bid, finding enough suppliers that could support the city of Flint and, as opposed to trying to negotiate better terms with Republic. And so, unfortunately. And so unfortunately, we were not able to put this out to bid in enough time so that we can do-
Give me a summary of the terms that you negotiated. That's better than the last.
Okay, so in-
If you know.
So in terms-
And if you don't, maybe we're here from Republic. But I don't want to put nobody on the spot, but this the type of stuff I'm gonna probe into.
And I understand that, and that's your right. So one, you know, I think the biggest parts or the biggest pains, um, in terms of a negotiation was, um, was, was around recycling.
What's for that?
Recycling. Whether we were gonna continue to, they were gonna continue to support recycling as it was or, um, discontinue that service or do it on a subscription basis. Another sticking point was the issue with, um, trashouts, with blight, with blight. We have a lot, we have a lot of blight, as you know. And we spent a lot of time trying to figure out whether or not Republic was going to charge individually or have that in the base price for those trashouts. And so I, I don't-
For those trash what?
Trashouts. So there's basically-
Trashouts, what's a trashout?
When I evict someone. And you were asking the finance guy about garbage.
Oh, you talking about when somebody get evicted?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. So those are the major sticking points that we-
That was the major sticking point with me last time. Because one company say they pick out everything, pick up everything on the corn, I mean, sitting out. And one company, Rizzo, said it, and then Republic said they, you know, I had experienced some certain things. And then it was some giving of dumpsters, and I don't know if that was taken back. But what is the years involved in this contract? How many?
So this is two and a half years.
Two and a half years?
Yes, this is two and a half.
Nobody discussed one year at a time?
We did, but, uh, Republic proposed a higher price for a shorter, for a short extension.
Okay, and we didn't put it out for bid, even if they the only one who bid. So somebody got smart and said, we'll do, and take it to their council for an extension. Is, what is this called technically, an extension?
I would say that it's-
A change order?
It's a change order, I would not say it's-
Yeah, that's a big change order.
Yeah.
Tell me and tell the public the dollars and cents involved here in this change.
So I don't have it wrong.
I've seen some like nineteen million or twelve.
So it's total, the total life, the total lifetime of the contract is nineteen million.
Nineteen million. See, I didn't even look, I just got a brain.
Yeah.
And remembered something.
So this one is for twelve.
This, this is major. You bring a nineteen million dollar contract before me, was it in Finance Committee meeting?
Yes.
And it was never discussed in this much detail? Republic wasn't there, was they?
Yes, they were.
Was they?
Yes.
And did they speak?
No.
Where was I at?
You were there. You were chairing.
I was chairing it. And so this one might get sent back. You and Republic tell me why I shouldn't ask that this be sent back to committee for further discussion? Since I'm telling you five million, nineteen million, y'all gonna start telling me, Mays, it's a five million, it's a nineteen million. Mays, Republic is in committee. And I'm gonna tell the council, because I don't know what happened. I know how council meetings go, and I be voting no to adjourn because you can't digest this stuff this fast. If you the type of council that just pass resolutions and don't vet and talk, y'all gonna have a field day with us.
So with that being said, Council, Councilman, I do appreciate the need, and that's one of the reasons why administration wanted to get this in front of you before the contract-
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna get to the bottom of it if I may. If I have to suspend the rules, I will. But let me say this, how many people have had a call in the last thirty days about this contract from anybody in the administration or Republic? Anybody willing to tell me, you have Ms. Galloway? You have Mr. Tegara? See, I haven't. And I'm the finance chair. If I did get one, it wasn't nothing of substance because I didn't get it. I done played this political game before. Mr. President, I want to hear from Republic if I can because I hope he ain't smiling. I don't know what this is.
Do you, you want, you want to hear from it?
Yeah, I want to hear from it because I'm saying, who calling and lobbying and talking or whatever done went on? But two people done been contacted. I haven't. And, and I would yield this here to quick answer if it's quick, but I'm on a roll. I know what I'm trying to say.
I just want to say that, um, I did receive a call from Gary. I talk to Gary often when my constituents have concerns. The position that I took was if the administration was happy with it and Republic was happy with it, because we say that, you know, we want to make sure that the administration has the ability to do things. By the time Gary called me, he wanted me to know that an agreement had been reached. Was I aware of it? And so that was the extent of our conversation.
Thank you.
I simply said, if the mayor is happy with it, the administration is happy with it, and the finance chair says it's there, and you guys are happy with it, um, I have some things to-
Not the finance chair, you talking about the finance director. I'm the finance chair. Let me say this.
Say again? Yes. Would you, would you also yield to Counselwoman Fields?
Yeah, I will because there's no motion on the floor right now. So we ain't under time restraint.
Mr. President, once we yield, yielding means you give up the floor, it doesn't mean you give the floor back.
It do.
I think that's something we need to handle with parliament area.
Okay, well, let's, okay, let's do that, let's do that, let's do that something, yeah, okay.
Yeah. I want to say that-
That's your point of information.
What's your point?
If she don't want to yield, I'll continue.
I think, um, I'm with Ms. Galloway on this. Um, I actually talked to, uh, also Republic because I had, I had a couple of calls, which I have to tell you, anytime any of my constituents call me, for some reason garbage didn't get picked up in an address, I mean, they address it immediately. I, I think that's why the public has been so satisfied with Republic services. And they pick up everything, there's no arguing, um, I think the customer service is extraordinary. And, um, what, what I was told basically, big picture here, is that, um, basically, the cost of waste management is going up. The market is really, uh, getting more and more expensive, you know, all over the country, quite considerably more expensive. And that the negotiation between the administration and Republic is really in the city of Flint's best interest. Because one of the things that had been considered in order to keep, uh, costs down is to either not provide recycling or to do recycling as an extra fee to, uh, citizens. And the mayor said, no, absolutely not. We don't want to charge our citizens more for recycling. Uh, we'd like to keep that as it is. So, uh, Republic agreed to do that. Um, and then the other issue was, one of the things that, uh, Republic has found, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that is very expensive, is that landlords have these evictions and they leave these huge piles of trash. And they may do it multiple times within a two or three month period. And perhaps ultimately, we may have to look at changing our fee structure so that landlords have to pay for these extra dump pickups. But I believe, and Mr. Newsom, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what was negotiated is pretty much the same services we have now, uh, for a very, very slight increase. And, um, each household is assessed now, how much per household and how much will the increase be under these negotiations?
Right now, it's one hundred and fifty, um, one hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-four cents is what the special assessment is per, per parcel. And so we, I need to sit down and look at the numbers because we might use a mix of, the fund balance in the two-twenty-six fund, one point six million dollars is just, you know, sitting there. Um, and so we might use a mix of fund balance, um, and, um, increase in the special assessment to pay for the additional cost. We, we'll bring that to you, won't be more than twenty-one dollars.
Point of innovation.
Per, per household, twenty-one dollars a year per household. Won't be more than that. It's twenty-eighty-four.
So under this negotiation, the maximum it could increase-
Will be twenty dollars.
Will be twenty-one dollars a year.
Point, point of innovation, though.
What's your point?
What did you say was the total increase? Like twenty, I get the twenty-one.
Right. So what, when you say total increase, you mean-
Like from what we had before till now?
For the special assessment or for the contract?
For the contract.
For the contract.
Yeah, for the contract.
For the contract, um, it depends on what you, what you look at. So the problem is that we, you know, the, the actual cost increase was roughly over the lifespan of the contract, about, I believe, two point zero million. But the problem is, is that the scope of services had to stay, we had to either decrease the scope of services, as Ms. Fields said, or we had to, um, increase the price because of some of the challenges I think that Gary's gonna get into in just a second.
Okay. Okay, can I continue?
Mr. President.
I'm still have the floor, I believe.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
Okay.
We'll get you, Counselman.
All right, um, okay, so as I understand it, given where the market is, okay, well, it's explained to me, is that this went out to bid, um, neither the administration nor Republic felt that they would be able to, that the bids coming back would be nearly as economical as this, you know, potentially small change of maybe twenty-one more a year, um, to, to retain the service, services we have. Could, could you just, and I'm not holding you to this amount, but, um, could you, Mr. Hicks, or you, Mr. Newsom, tell us how much you think the increase might be if we had to put the whole thing out to bid rather than just do a change order and a contract extension? Just a guesstimate.
Um, and thank you, Mr. President and Counsel, I appreciate it. And before I answer the question, if I can, I would like to just deviate just a bit. Mr. Mays?
Mr. President?
Counselman.
I'm gonna listen, but when I start on something with Newsom and go to him and yield and do, it's kind of a disservice to my train of thought. So I'm listening, but I'm not gonna keep doing this.
Okay, appreciate you, sir.
I, I, Mr. Mays, I just want to, I did reach out to you, sir, um, three times, actually.
What happened?
It said your voicemail was full.
Yeah, my voicemail tell me, I'll play it right now, I'll tell you what it say. You want to hear it? So I, let me do this, Mr. President, because my credibility is on the line.
No, sir.
My voicemail stay full. It tells you and asks you to call me back.
I, and that's why-
That's exactly what it say. You want to hear it? I deal with thousands.
I, I-
And so don't stand up and say you reached out. Do what it say then. Don't say it's full, say what it say. You want to hear what it say?
I know what it says.
What it say?
It said your voicemail's full. You want me to recite the entire voicemail that you-
And what do it say after it says full?
Please call you back.
Call me back.
Three times, sir.
Yeah, I don't too much miss call, sir. You want to go under oath? Now, I'm telling you, you call me three times.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Not, what's your point?
What's your point of order?
He's, he's like yelling at him, and he's just here to, to tell us information. Can we calm it down a little, please?
Thank you.
I'm very calm, but when he comes to-
But now, here's what I, here's what I don't want to do. I don't want to get into this circus that we're well aware that we can do it well.
Let me say this, Mr. President.
Proceed, Mr.-
If I may. For some, a businessman to stand up here with a nineteen million dollar contract and say he reached out to me three times on a cell phone, I got office, I got staff, I got a cell phone. I'm not buying it in this public arena. So Ms. Worthing, this is what I'm saying. I've been around a long time. This is a man standing up, I reached out three times. Reach out four. I don't even know if I believe you reached out three. That's what I'm saying, since you saying it publicly, if you start to premise this conversation, maybe you have, only God knows. But I'm here to tell you, Mr., what is his name?
Hicks.
Hicks, Mr. Hicks. Counselman Mays don't have a reputation of missing three business calls. And I'm not gonna let you stand up here and say it, it could be true. Only God only knows. Proceed from there, but I hear you, but I'm gonna prove to you what my voicemail say. Since you say it's full, I want you to go further. If you heard my voicemail, you would have heard what it said. It repeatedly says, if you missed me, call me back. If you missed me, call me back.
Counselman Mays, let me say this, he's made your point for you. He said what you said it said.
No, he didn't.
He said that it's-
No, he didn't. He said, period, I reached out three times, your voicemail was full. That's what he said.
But you asked him, what did it say? And it said you said-
He didn't ever say it said, call me back.
Yes, he did.
No, he didn't. No, he didn't.
Counselman.
I'm telling you, if he did, I didn't hear it, he, he didn't say it said, call me back. He said it was full. That's what he said, and that's what the record will reflect. He didn't ever say it said, call me back. I said it said, call me back. Now, that's what I, I, I ain't, I ain't even agreeing with what you saying, Mr. President. And if you that interested in my brain and what I hear, we'll check it because it's recorded.
I think we need to-
But anyway, let him proceed with his opening statement towards me.
What's your point?
Could Mr. Hicks and Mr. Newsom respond to the question I asked them?
Yes, ma'am.
Or they respond to other people's questions? Thank you.
Yeah, but you, he, I, point of, point of, point of order, I yielded to her. He addressed me. Now, if she don't want to play the game and yield back and make a big issue, I won't yield to her no more. I'll finish when I called him up.
Okay.
Mr. President, let me hear what he got to say.
Here's what I want to do. We've got Mr. Hicks here, I'd like for Mr. Hicks to respond. And if we're going to act professional here, which we should, we've been doing pretty good, I'm hoping that we don't get all crazy and everything, go ahead and respond, Mr. Hicks.
I'll give you an example, thank you, sir. I'll give you an example of a bid that just transpired here within the last week, the Fenton Township.
No, he was the guy.
Fenton Township's current rate was somewhere around eleven dollars and twenty-three cents, something like that. My bid came in at fourteen dollars and eight cents. The nearest competitor to me is a local competitor, and they were eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents. I can continue to rattle off more also. Uh, city of Montrose, the bids were open. I raised the rate tremendously, I was the only bidder. It just keeps going, the rates have dramatically increased. And the service over the last two years that were priced based on the court order was something that was never sustainable. The city of Flint is generating more trash today than it did the first year that I started the contract. Uh, Mr. Newsom was provided with all dump tickets, um, it wasn't all dump tickets, but a spreadsheet of every dump ticket. And in two thousand thirteen, when we started the contract, we generated twenty-nine thousand tons of trash. Today, it's thirty-three thousand tons of trash. We want to get into the, to the recycling part of it, where costs have dramatically gone up. There's a thing, if anyone gets bored, you're welcome to look up, called the China Sward. China has shut off all recycling to that, to that country from us. Sixty percent of our recycling used to go there. It doesn't anymore. That's all now being sourced and brought back in to the United States. It's driven the commodity price way down and the cost to process it way up. You're seeing communities across the country stop their recycling programs. I give the administration full credit for keeping your program here just based on the number of water bottles that we collect. That would have all been landfilled. So there are multiple factors that brought the rate up. And I truly believe, as a partner with this city, that had it gone out to bid, the rates would have gone up tremendously. Keep in mind, as I stated earlier, the rates that were through the court order were not sustainable. And that's why I believe that company is no longer in business and is forcing rates up higher now as we speak.
Thank you. May I ask Mr. Newsom one question?
Now, Counselwoman Fields, we're gonna let you have that question, but then we're gonna get back to this separation, and Counselman Mays did separate it. So I want to get back to him, but go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. Mr. Newsom, there's a reason why the administration is promoting, um, this contract. Can you give me just a quick overview of why the administration wants, is, is supporting this contract this way?
Yeah, so it, it, we, given Mr. Hicks's feedback, there were two ways we can do this. We wanted to make sure, and the direction was clear, we did not want, we did, um, not want to have any fewer services that were provided, um, already in the contract. We explored, um, very, we explored very deeply, actually, um, taking some of the services away and doing those on an all-a-cart, um, subscription-based, um, approach, right? That in itself did not address the, um, additional costs, plus residents would have then had to pay for those services. So like I talked about before, the eviction, the trashouts with the eviction, recycling, we know that recycling is very important to the environment, um, this, that, and the other. So with that being said, it was either de-scope or pass along or, or manage, um, higher prices. along or, or manage um higher prices, and we spent a good, you know, a good portion of about two or three months going back and forth, pouring through the numbers, and this is the approach that administration agreed with.
Okay, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to move these to or approval, but if you think it's more important, since Mr. Mays separated them to go back to Mr. Mays, then I'll, I'll hold off on my motion.
Thank you, councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, because that motion in effect would've gave up more time than the amount on separation, so I appreciate it. Look, the best way to, the, the way to come to this council and get votes from me ain't to say you reached out three times to my cell phone, I'm a business person, I got staff, we got an office, I talks to Ms. Brown, I talk to Devina and them, if somebody come to my professional office and leave a message, I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get it. So let this day be the day for the city to know, Councilman Mays got an office, I'm a professional, I ain't nobody you just reach out to and say you can't get me, that's the staff of city council lets Councilman Mays know who calling, who looking, and who what when they can't get me. Now, if Republic is a professional business too, Mr. Hicks and all due respect to what you said, understand that with Councilman Mays, if you reach out to me that many times and can't get me, contact my professional office and staff, I'm sure I'll get it. Now, let me say this, I done watched contracts vetted and not vetted for over thirty years on this council, I done dealt with complete towing and people moving around lobbying council persons for years, I didn't vote for Republic in the middle of that mess, and it was based upon service and cost, and so I don't put it past a person to come and publicly say they reached out to me, but I don't put it past me that I missed something, because I'm human, I can miss something, but I don't miss much. Councilpeople call me, I got citizens call me, I don't miss much, I see the little red cricket arrow, missed call. Three times is hard to convince me of that, it could be true. I don't like politics, nineteen million dollar contract, nineteen million dollar contract, two years extension, change order versus a um request for proposal. We sound hypocritical in this city, I just read something where the mayor was bragging about putting out proposals for some with the mayors around the country, and it's a good process. You can't make me buy into some without discussing the details, I don't care who didn't call who and what Kate Fields and others is saying about who talked to them and if the mayor and them agree, I'm a councilman, I'm gonna vet it, and I'm finna start now. Mr. President, can I start where I left off at and get Mr. Hicks back up? Mr. Hicks, are you willing?
Yes, sir.
I'm ready.
Come on, you, you, you're good.
Mr. Hicks, give me a general description of the contract that we fixing to try to enter into, how much can be picked up at each house, including the evictions and big items and what would be left, that's been the detail of your contract, is it still there, give me some of that if you understand my question, if not, I'll clarify.
No, sir, I understand, it is a two and a half year, price firm for two and a half years, there are no rate increases, there are no fuel surcharges, it is the exact same service that you receive today, weekly recycle, weekly seasonal yard waste, weekly unlimited solid waste.
It ain't weekly unlimited solid waste if we worried about evictions that set out there, y'all pick up all evictions now?
We do.
And that will be in the next two years, if I see us couches and all kinda stuff setting out, it ain't getting left.
That is correct, sir, it doesn't get left today.
And have it been left in the last year?
Has it been left, though, sir?
Sir, what if I can leave this council chambers, take you over on Home Street now? It was there when I left, this was pickup day, would it surprise you that evictions is setting out in the first ward now, would that surprise you?
Uh, no, sir.
You wanna reach out to me and travel with me and look?
Anytime.
Okay, let's do it tonight.
Can I, and let me, let me.
And I'll postpone this until you prove me wrong.
Let me, let me clarify.
Okay, clarify.
So, we used to pick up all of the bulk piles with the regular collection, and then we started getting phone calls saying, hey, you're usually here at two o'clock, why aren't you here yet? So, if the pile is too big, based on the size of the pile, it will get left, your blight department is notified of that, then we send a separate truck back through to pick it up. Um, Ms. Galloway, I.
How long do that take?
It's always the same week.
Let me say this, I done had regular trash pickup left, and I done been on three-way calls with my constituency, that didn't even get picked up the same week.
Hmm, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that, sir.
I am aware, you believe me?
I do.
You want me to call my residents in, they'll do one side of the street, leave the other side, we call on a three-way and they'll say, we'll schedule it, they're sorry, they'll give me a confirmation number, we've got confirmation numbers, and it go two days, three, we call back again, you know when they get it? Be next week on the regular day, and my constituency pulls it back to their garage after three, four days, two, three calls to Republic, are you familiar with that?
Um, I.
You never heard of that in your life?
Oh, that's.
As it relates to Flint?
Oh, certainly.
You have heard?
Oh, certainly.
So you know there are some problems, who do we reach out to and really get a circle back same day or next day? You?
It's always been me, sir.
It ain't been you with me, I've been talking to operators, that you know they ain't even located here, they in other states, the people I talk to, y'all got people in other states, correct?
Yes, sir.
I ain't talked to you or called you yet, have I?
It's been a couple of years.
I'm talking, yeah, uh, uh, about missed pickups.
Yeah, I have not spoke to you.
No, you have not, let me say this, Mr. Hicks, I'm telling you, nineteen million dollar contract, and I'm confused, you saying it's unlimited pickup, but the evictions will stay there until you call Raul, our blight department, and schedule it with them, why do you schedule that with our blight department and not just pick it up? What is going on?
No, no.
Make it make sense to me.
It's, it's not called to Raul to collect, it's called to the blight department to notify them that it was there, the blight department equally notifies me when there's something else out there, that happens every day.
Okay, I know that, I notifies the blight department, and if they notify you and they pick it up, I need to hear that, but then not only do I need to hear that, but what is you notifying the blight department for and all you gotta do is pick it up?
It's because of the communication between the blight department and Republic is very, very strong.
That's cool.
We notify them when we see something.
Let me say this, you wanna notify Councilman Mays when you see something in the first ward?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, if you, let's do that for thirty to sixty days, if you wanna notify me, you can still notify the blight department, but I'll notify you when I see couches and stuff sitting there.
Please do.
Day after day.
Please do, I, I.
Let me say this, you don't have to, in my opinion, notify the blight department, if you standing before me telling you, me, you pick up garbage, recycling, and evictions, pick 'em up, and how long do it take on a normal route after you notify blight, after you don't pick it up on the regular route? You think the average pickup of that big bulk stuff is how many days?
I would say an average of three.
Three, okay, so if I see something longer than three days, I should call you?
Please do.
What's your number?
Eight one zero, I'll give you a.
Eight one zero, no, I won't, I won't, I won't, you, you don't have to say it out loud, we'll, we'll protect your privacy, I'll take your card, I don't know if I'm ready to vote, 'cause I don't trust what I'm hearing, so to speak, and I'm gonna tell you why I don't trust it, 'cause it's coming at me too fast, and when it come at me fast and I know it ain't after it, I got a problem, I done seen stuff setting more than three days, and you, and you corrected it when I say follow me now, then you say, oh, it takes me, it ain't the same day pickup, okay, I'll give that to you, this is my position. Bidding to the administration means something, don't bring me a nineteen million dollar change order and folks lobbying all around me and I ain't heard nothing, they can do what they want with it, and you can lobby four and five of them, and I ain't heard in no public meeting, no discussion about services, possible raises, so they can vote for you, they can be happy that they beat me and voted for it, I ain't voting for it tonight. Now, I move it back for further discussion, this is a nineteen million dollar contract, details, folks hooving around in meetings ain't said what it really was, now I gotta vote, it's time for me to really look at it, should've already been done, you should've stood before me in committee and reached out to me if you was here, you say you called me three times but ain't tapped me on the shoulder, you didn't even tap me on the shoulder and say I tried to call you three times, but you say you was here, you ain't said nothing to me today, you ain't said nothing to me if it was in committee, I'm suspicious of that, you are reaching out to me publicly, I called you three times and was here and ain't tapped me on the shoulder and say I wanna talk to you, you think I didn't go to Michigan State, it don't make sense to me, that just don't make sense to me, it's important for you to reach out three times, you come to a committee meeting before this meeting knowing this nineteen million dollar contract and don't tap me on the shoulder and say Councilman Mays, I tried to catch up with you, I'm suspicious of that type of activity.
I understand.
You do understand?
Sure, yes, sir.
Look, this is a nineteen million dollar garbage contract, all of a sudden, those who question the administration, all of a sudden say I trust the administration, I trust them, let me.
Councilman, hold on, now, we're on one eight zero five four, did you combine both of them?
I'm talking about both of them.
Okay, alright, 'cause now, here's what I wanna do, 'cause we, we, we're steady going and we're steady going, I've got two more speakers on this, we're talking about whether we, this is a separation, it is your separation, both of them, but I'd like to get to Councilman Garrett and Councilman Davis, would you please proceed on?
Mr. President, I'd like to get to Councilman Garrett and Councilman Davis too, but I'm Councilman Mays, and this is a nineteen million dollar contract.
I know, but, but what I'm saying, council, either we, we're gonna vote it on or we're gonna send it back to committee, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but if I know we gonna send it back to committee, I can talk short, because then I have time to deal with it where I think it should be dealt with in detail.
Okay.
So I don't know, I done heard what two people said, and I count votes right.
Well, I wanna, I wanna say something too, that's why I wanna get to everybody.
I want anybody to say something, but how important is a nineteen million dollar contract?
Let's just calm down, we, we, you're gonna talk, you, I wanna hear what you gotta say, you got the floor, I was just saying, I've got Councilman Garrett, Councilman Davis, Councilwoman Galloway, then I'm gonna talk, so proceed, and Councilwoman, would you come take my place just for a minute, go ahead.
I ain't got no problem with folks interrupting me to say how many people wanna speak behind me, and when I get ready to speak behind them, I want them to interrupt and say I'm wanna speak behind them, my point is this, this is a serious business, I done heard from two of my colleagues saying they ready to vote, it seemed, that's what I think I heard, and then I can hear other colleagues and I count well, Mr. Hicks, publicly, if I was to count Galloway, Worthy, maybe Griggs and Fields, that's four, one more, you got your nineteen million dollar contract, and I ain't properly vetted it, I ain't vetted it in a finance way and I ain't vetted it in a service way, and I don't like people making up answers as they go along, different from what I done experienced in real life, you ain't telling me it's a policy for eight wards and the guy who didn't vote for you before is getting stuff left setting out in one ward, I don't think I'm hearing that, but what you are hearing is me telling you I'm watching couches and stuff set for weeks on the curb, that's what I'm telling you, whether you know it, whether somebody playing a game on the first ward, this is the time I get to tighten up the act, the way you tighten up the act is you don't give a contract till you get an agreement that you know about, see, 'cause the administration and the mayor might not get the calls that I get, you know who they call frontline? Councilman Mays, they didn't pick up my garbage, Councilman Mays, when we gonna get them couches and stuff picked up? Councilman Mays, them, that's, that's causes raccoons and possums and Councilman Mays, so I don't know what the administration agreeing to, I know what I'm gonna vote on and what I wanna hear and what I'm gonna agree to, we in our first investigative hearing, folks come up here and just blow smoke up our pass ledge, but when you put them under oath and it's a piss possibility, the penalty of perjury, they won't just come up here and tell you anything, they won't tell you what they'll pick up and don't, they won't tell you how many times they've reached out to you, the penalty of perjury and swaying people in means something, for a nineteen million dollar garbage contract, I'll do that.
Yeah, but we have.
It don't have to be a hearing, we could ask it to be done now, I wanna know about that contract, now, when I hear my colleagues, particularly the leader of this council, President Winfrey say you got some people willing to speak, I gave up the floor to Ms. Galloway, to Ms. Fields, and if my attitude can change now because I was doing something, when my attitude has changed, then I'm gonna get back to reading and writing and reading your contract later, 'cause stuff is off teal, if Mr. Garrett wanna say something, Mr. Winfrey wanna say something, and whoever else, he said, I'm polite, but I ain't got my questions answered, do we have a copy of this contract attached to this resolution?
I don't believe so, but we.
I don't believe so neither, but I wanna see it and read it before I vote, when did I become so trusting of everybody that I'm voting on contracts that ain't before me and I'm reading because somebody done called and lobbied a few council persons, complete used to do that, complete towing, this remind me of that type of activity, Mr., Republic got to show me written contracts, I wanna read it.
The, the contract is the current contract that you have.
It should be attached, because the current contract ain't worked for me, and do the current contract say you picking up evictions?
Yes, sir.
I would make a referral and I want that current contract in my mailbox as soon as possible, I ask that the current Republican contract that they telling me is an extension and this one will be identical, so it wasn't nothing taken away, nothing added.
You have that.
That ain't what I think I done heard here today, you telling, somebody said something about twenty-one dollars, clear that up, whoever said something about twenty-one dollars, they, it's, clear it up, 'cause I'm here, ain't nothing subtracted, ain't nothing added.
So, councilman, I said that's a ceiling of how much we would have to increase the.
Say that again?
That's a ceiling, that's a maximum, we don't know, I haven't, I have not proposed a number for the increases.
So we looking for a possible change order to this contract when it go up, possibly up to twenty-one dollars?
No, 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 the, what we're talking about, if you read the resolution, we're saying that it would, it, there might be a special assessment, remember, the garbage fund is funded via a special assessment.
But why would I vote prior to knowing all of that?
Um, no, what was put in the resolution was so that you are informed that, and reminded.
Yeah, but he just said it ain't no changes, now you saying it could be changes, maybe not in the contract, but in the price to residents.
Councilman, he said that there's no changes.
In the contract.
With the exception, obviously, of the dollars.
Well, now I hear the exception, I didn't hear that.
Okay, well.
So now I hear the exception, all I wanna do is get a clarification, and if you wanna do it now, I'll stay here to ten, thirty, eleven at night, if my colleagues wanna talk, then I'm gonna move to postpone. If my colleagues wanna talk, then I'm gonna move to postpone it to finance. Depending on how much I hear here is gonna tell me something. I know I ain't gonna have a written contract to review to match up with what's being said. I'm hearing no changes with the exception of money. Money is important. Do you know how many council persons was bragging no increase to the residents?
Point of information.
What's your point?
Um, is my colleague willing to make a motion to postpone this to the next finance committee to discuss?
I will move to postpone it, but let me ask you this question before I do. When do the current contract terms expire?
November twelfth.
That's an important question to ask. See, that's what's important. And that's all, that question was in my mind, but when Ms. Galloway asked me that, when I make a motion, we got a meeting, and we might have to meet before the twelfth. Through you, Mr. President, to the clerk or you, do we have a council meeting on or before the twelfth of November?
We have a council meeting on the twelfth. We have committee meeting on November the seventh.
So, we got a council meeting on the twelfth?
Right.
That's a regular council meeting. Let me ask you this question. That contract expires at midnight on the twelfth?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so that mean if we pass it on the twelfth, we ain't missing nothing?
Um, eleven fifty-nine that night, so you would, council would be meeting as the contract is about to expire. Administration specifically wanted to get this in front of you so we would not hit you with something, um, the night the council, the night that the contract ended. So, if it's done so that we had at least two sets of meetings.
Do the contract end on eleven fifty-nine, on the eleventh, or eleven fifty-nine?
On the twelfth.
On the twelfth?
Yes.
So, that mean we ain't gonna probably still be meeting at eleven fifty-nine on the twelfth. We'll probably meet somewhere between five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
And again, Councilman, the point that I was trying to make was, we wanted to give you all ample time.
Okay, we also-
Think we continue-
We also got ample time to call a special meeting on the third, the fourth, the fifth, the sixth, the seventh. That's how important garbage was before.
I couldn't agree more. This is why we wanted to bring it to you.
That's why I'm talking. So, when is the, um, committee meeting?
On the seventh.
Seventh. I would move that, um, we postpone these, um, resolutions to finance committee meeting on the seventh.
There's a motion on the floor to-
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Galloway.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
There is.
Uh, Devina, let's put us on time, cuz listen, we've talked about this one all night.
And I will not. I will not.
I'm not, I'm not, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
I wanna tell everyone why I support that motion. Councilman Mays, I wanna thank you. Um, I went back to the proposal that was in question. Um, and the proposal that came from Republic at that time was a five-year base price, um, that came out to nineteen million five eighteen. Um, and, no, I'm looking at my notes right here. And Rizzo's was seventeen four twenty-two. Um, but if I'm not mistaken, um, Republic accepted Rizzo's three-year bid, which if I'm correcting my numbers, I don't, was something like, um, ten million five? Was that, what was it roughly?
Yeah, I actually don't remember the numbers, but it wasn't a three-year. We ended up, the court order was a one-year with a one-year extension based on the same price, same services.
Okay, but the reason for that is, in doing the bid of the five-year at the nineteen million five eighteen, that came out to a yearly cost of three million nine oh three, if my numbers are correct. Um, but this new contract comes out to four, I'm sorry, I wrote it down here. Four million five, I'll tell you in a second. And so, there's a huge increase. And so, when we sit here and say that the prices have gone up, the prices did go up. They went up a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I just think that it warrants information more to talk about, to say, why, you know, don't, I know that you're saying the rates have gone up, but even in this, we see a rate increase of about six hundred thousand dollars. Is that about right? Do you know, Gary?
If your math is correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, so I think that Councilman Mays brings up a very valid, um, point in making sure because nobody wants to raise the rates on the constituents twenty-one dollars. But my thing is, even if we had stuck with what Republic was doing for three years, the constituents would have had more. And so, we really do need to do our math, but according to this, nineteen five eighty-nine, three nineteen divided by five, comes out, oh, I'm sorry, comes out to, oh, but this isn't a five-year contract.
Correct.
According to this, it's four point, I'm sorry, that's where I got the number. Four point five five nine seven one seven is a difference of six hundred thousand dollars from what the bid was just two years ago when we had all of the commotions. So, that warrants discussing and I would be willing to support sending it and having a special meeting to make sure that our constituents do not have an issue with trash pickup. That's all I have.
Councilman Garrett?
Yeah, I asked for the floor and the other motion, um, so it wasn't specifically on this one.
Well, you know, you-
Can you, is that working right today? You got me? I said I had asked the floor on the other motion, not specifically on this motion.
I heard that, so it was working, but go ahead.
Alright, that's all I had to say on that. I'll wait for the other.
Anybody else on this, uh, Councilwoman Fields?
I don't wanna go into all the details, but I think Councilwoman Galloway is maybe not remembering everything that happened regarding that price and regarding the court order and how it ended up like that. In the beginning, when the first bids were put out, that Republic and Rizzo and I think there was another one had responded to, okay? The bid had not been fully analyzed, the analysis of the bid results. And the then director of transportation, Kay Muhammad, if you wanna read the RTAB minutes of that time period-
Point of information.
What's your point?
Does my colleague realize that I'm simply going off of what Republic bid, not the vetting process?
Okay. Proceed.
The, but it's regarding the price that Republic had to go by? That's why I'm trying to explain to you. The reason, the court ordered that and it never made any sense to me whatsoever because the analysis of it had never been completed and that was part of the problem. And that was part of what caused council to file the lawsuit to, with the injunction to stop this contractor Rizzo going through. Because the analysis did not include all of the value added, like the recycling costs and the blight, the additional blight activities they were going to do. And then, for some unknown reason, the court ordered that Republic would do the job at Rizzo's bid. But Rizzo's bid was never realistic because it did not include those value-added items. And, um, you know, I know that's a lot to go in at this time of night, but if you read those documents, especially Kay Muhammad's testimony at the RTAB meeting, and I actually have it, I can email it to you if you'd like, you'd understand why that price is not one that they had bid, it was the one that Rizzo had bid and it wasn't realistic.
Mr. President?
Uh, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. Hicks, Hicks, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hicks, I want you to know, I believe you gonna get the contract. I believe you gonna do it, but I believe it's a way to do it. We did a thirty-year deal that the other council wouldn't do and we passed that vote. We a different council now. And so, we do good work and we do, um, things that need to be done. That's why I'm asking. And it's an important question, when did the contract expire? When you talk about contracts, you look at beginning dates, ending dates. I'm glad we got time. I'm glad they didn't tell me tomorrow. I appreciate Ms. Galloway saying that she willing to meet in a special meeting. We know how to get our work done. And that's gonna give you some days to reach out to me and some days to reach out to you, but it ain't about me and it ain't about you. It's to me about the residents and the services that they get. And maybe it is about me. I don't wanna keep getting them calls.
I totally-
And I don't want nobody's reputation bad, mine, yours, or whatever. So, I believe if the administration had met, I might go along with it. I didn't vote last time. I might go with the extension of the change order versus a putting it out for bid. But I wanna talk about it. I wanna look at terms of contracts, finances, and changes. So, if you hear what I'm saying, that's what I'm meaning when I'm doing this. I'm not trying to do nothing spectacular and think it's another company gonna come or, you might wanna talk to me because they might have been tighter with the pocketbook than me. I might wanna do some and learn about dumpsters being set out. I'm proposing to get Raul a call to pick up stuff and clean up wards. So, this is very interesting to me. I wanna see what you can do and can't do. And I'm telling my colleagues, if they don't wanna talk about it tonight, then support it back in finance. I will put it as the top special order, get you in and out of there, and then then did homework before I get there.
Mr. President?
And then then did homework before I get there. So, Madam Clerk, Mr. President, if this go back to finance, I wanted us to top special order and I'm gonna then did some homework. And I believe me and you gonna then talk.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, Councilman Davis, then Councilman Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice to finally meet you, Mr. Hicks, because Republic is the one that collect, well, I guess, all over the city, but mainly, I'm elated to see y'all when you're in my ward. All I need is a couple of questions for clarity.
Yes, sir.
Now, when it come to evictions, you collect them.
We do.
How could a resident go about, if we was to pull up some of them, we got a lot of banded and blighted properties in my ward, land bank properties. If we pull them to the curb, that trash, you only pick up from occupied residents?
That is, well, that is correct. Unfortunately, I believe we're picking up from a lot of properties that are not generating revenue to the city for their trash, like land bank properties.
You saying you are?
If it's at the curb, we are picking it up.
So, this is my clarity. I'm only one vote. I support Republic. I support the administration. I'm not a numbers person. I'm a service person. I'm tired of the blight in my ward, that's why I'm elected and I'm sitting here to have this conversation. If me and some of these neighborhood association pull some of this blight that's destroying our neighborhoods to that curb and we call you, even though it's been sitting there, I ask, Councilman, our wards stay blighted. It seem like that's the way they want us out of there. But if we come to an agreement, we pull it without a dumpster, and it ain't that much, but it make our neighborhood look real bad. Across that curb, stop it in a neat pile and we contact you, any kind of way you could tell this body that you will pick it up?
Yes, sir. The only thing I would encourage is that if it's a land bank property-
Yes.
Contact land bank for them to collect it. It is their responsibility for that property. And just one more thing to know, I cannot go up onto the property to collect it. That's why some of the stuff, some of the stuff that you may see is actually beyond the curb and by law, I can't go up there and take it. And then, I wanna add one more thing. There is a really bad problem with bedbugs in this city.
Yes.
So, you may see an item sitting and that's where I will notify blight. Blight will then notify the resident, we can't pick that up until it's properly prepared.
This stuff I'm referring to through, Mr. President, to Mr. Hicks, it's been sitting there for months on end, if not years. And it's frustrating, me being a council person, it's like I'm not doing my job. We turn it in to the blight department and we gonna make more motion to get a more timely response because it is frustrating. But I'm not a numbers person. I'm only one vote. We, the quality of work Republic do, I cannot dispute that. But I'm just saying, we will contact blight. Land bank is land bank. They got immunity and that's frustrating. We didn't discover that a while ago. They don't take care of their properties, we know that. But we deserve, according to the preamble of the charter, to have a safe, clean environment to live in. And Republican, Republican, your service is the one that provides that.
Yes, sir.
I don't have an issue with the increase of whatever your contract, nineteen million, it's not, it's the service, the quality of the service. And only thing I would wish within your contract, extension, however you wanna word it, that you consider being lenient. If we put it across to public property, on, across the curb, some of it, and we do, if you don't get it all at one time, that's fine, but over a period of time to help the residents, help theyself. And I'm done.
Councilman Garrett?
Yeah, I won't be supporting sending this back to council. I know I had some questions and I asked Huey about them and we talked about that in my office. I think that this is the most fiscally responsible thing we can do in regards to trash pickup, um, because it's not something I'd like to see delayed, especially if it comes to that point. Uh, I have contacted you guys for several issues, uh, and you guys have been right on it. I think it's important enough for residents watching to take and know what you said is that you're not the blight department, so you can't go onto properties and take stuff. And I know we've had some issues and that I've called you guys on, they had to deal with bedbugs and they have to wrap that before you can pick it up, cuz you don't want that spreading to your employees, uh, their homes and spreading throughout the areas, cuz, you know, the garbage men, they go from house to house, so that would definitely travel if that does. Um, so, I just wanna thank you guys for the, I mean, if it went up for a bid, I feel like we would be paying a lot more money, uh, for the city of Flint for these things and I think the change order was responsible for the administration to do, so I will not support suspending, uh, sending this back to committee and I hope that we can vote on this tonight and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Galloway?
Yep, thank you. Um, I just wanna make sure for clarity that, um, one of my colleagues mentioned about Kay Muhammad. I'm very familiar with that. I was a part of that. I'm not speaking about that. I'm speaking specifically about the amount that Republic bid on that contract. And your bid included all of those things. You guys offered services to assist blight. You assisted Raul. And so, um, Gary, you and I have worked very closely. There are some issues, like over in my neighborhood, they're very angry, cuz trash is picked up about four or five P.M. And I get it. With that contract, it stripped you guys. You lost a lot of people. I was there. I was here. I saw the recruitment from Rizzo, from Republic, where your employees literally jumped ship because it was like a done deal. So, I get that. But I also heard something today that I didn't hear. For some people, a twenty-one dollar increase per lot don't mean a lot. But over where I serve with seniors, I want this time to be able to inform them that an increase is on the horizon. And so, I'm physically responsible, but I don't, I don't, my colleagues were not here. I went back to what you guys bid, not what Kay Muhammad said, not with the vetting process, realizing that you guys took a contract that was un, almost impossible to manage. And you know I know that. When I call you, Gary, you respond. I was just showing, um, Ms. Winfrey Carter, I go through my neighborhood and if I see large amounts of trash, I take a picture of it, I text it to Gary and I say, hey, just so you know, trash day is X, Y, Z day. This is on the curb at address such and such and such, in case you need to have two men come out to do it, or if you wanting to come before or after. So, you and I have a great relationship and so it's not that. But I do wanna use the time, if it passes, to let my constituents know that this trash collection is higher and you could see an increase of possibly twenty-one dollars. Because when they were talking about ten dollars, people were, so this is an opportunity for me to communicate effectively with my constituents, even if I support it in the end, and you and I have already talked. So, I just want that for my constituents that are looking in the seventh ward, be ready to hear about a possible increase in property taxes, because for everybody, twenty-one dollars can make a difference.
Mr. President?
Yeah, could I say, could I say something, Councilman? I haven't said anything and, uh, I almost called you Councilman. That's just how confused I am when we keep going over stuff for so long. But, uh, Mr. Hicks, I'm glad that you were here and I did see you at, uh, at the, um, committee meeting. I did see you at the committee meeting. But now, here's what I wanted to say. You and I-
and I are in contact quite often.
Yes, sir.
And whenever my constituents, as, as others have, other, my other colleagues have had constituents that have had issues, but whenever I call you, you get on it. And you do it either that day or the next day. That's been consistent. Now, you did call me and talk to me about this, but I didn't know whether you were calling me back because I had called you, and we, we do back and forth when I want, when I need something. You had said to me that you had talked to, you were trying to get in contact with my colleagues. Those were things that you said to me. You named some colleagues that, that you had gotten into contact, and some that you were still trying to get in contact with. And I don't remember the ones that you said that you had gotten. I think, I know you said that you had got in contact with, with Councilman Garrett, but there were a few others, and there were some that you said that you'd been trying, and you, that's to, and you couldn't get it because you didn't get an answer, but you were gonna continue to try. That's to your credit. So I'm saying all that to say this. I want my colleagues to get the answers that they need to make intelligent decisions. But I still want us to do this work where it's supposed to be done. Now, it, it was in committee. For whatever reasons, it wasn't done. I don't know. But th, this is a clear example of how we should be real cautious when we're in committee, so we can do that work in committee. Because here we are, we've been talking about this, this set aside almost one hour. And I ain't saying that it shouldn't be talked about that long, but I'm saying it shouldn't be talked about that long out here. And this is to my colleagues. Let's do this work in committee. That's all I got to say. Thank you for, for, for being here at the committee. Thank you for being here, uh, at this council meeting. Uh, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, Ms. President, and I don't blame y'all if it came through committee, but I'm still asking, when you got a big ticket item, and you-
What's your point?
I gotta be stickler for the rules. That's more than twice.
For this, for this, for the motion?
You know who made the motion, don't you? I made it. She supported it. This is the second round on this motion.
She was the first one. Oh.
You're right.
Right. Yeah, you, you said it, because he has, uh, so proceed.
I'm thinking it's the second time on this motion to postpone. That's what I think. Now, I could be wrong, but proceed. I appreciate it. My colleagues, Mr. Garrett particularly, I think it's the second time. And I think people get a kick out of trying to do something with me. Mr. Garrett, I don't know if you've read the contract, but I have to read rather than listen. And you might have talked with Mr. Hicks, but when it come to me, I want to read and ask questions. I don't want to just talk to the business person and say, I feel comfortable. So that's the difference maybe, unless through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Garrett, you've read the contract?
The resolution.
The resolution ain't the contract. So I'm talking about the contract. So this is my position. I'm not out to compete to be the best Democrat, the best council person. I'm just out to be who I be. And if you want to read and look and talk, I'mma do it in a timely manner. I'm telling him, I'm leaning toward maybe doing it this way versus putting it out to bid. But there's some things that we need to talk about. And just as you talk to him, I want to talk. And I don't care, Mr. President, if it's been an hour on a $19 million contract. I agree not out here. But only until I heard something, and we discussed it, did I know it might get to where it need to be discussed, and we all might have time to see what everybody else know. I really believe Republic will be picking up garbage in Flint. But I really believe we need to tighten up some stuff and talk. And I hope that this motion pass, and I look forward to that. Thank you, Ms. President.
Madam Clerk, this is a roll call on sending it back to, we said, finance?
Are we doing a vote on both of the?
At the same time.
At the same, both of them, yeah.
1-805-440, and 1-80544, yes. Mr. Winfrey?
No.
It won't pass.
Is this to?
You said send it back, we're saying send it back to finance, finance committee.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Ms. Worthing, please.
It's your, it's your vote.
Ms. Worthing.
Point of order, vote. Let's continue.
She's causing it.
Oh.
Ms. Worthing put us to roll call. She can't make the order be nothing else.
Point of order, there's no discussion during a vote.
It's a roll call.
I said, no.
Okay. Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. President.
If I can please. It's, uh, four yes, and five no.
Ms. President.
Councilman Mays.
I won't be making a motion to approve this, and I will be talking about whether or not we get an increase. An increase in any taxes or garbage is headlines. The media ain't here now, but it'll be headlines. To vote on contracts we ain't read is gonna end up being some political suicide. I'm making a record. I know what exactly what I'm doing.
Okay, Councilman, Councilman, there's nothing on the floor. There's no, I, I got you, you say?
Ain't nothing on the floor, but I'm talking on my separation.
But your separation, we've already voted on it, sir.
No, that was just to postpone. It's still separated, and that's why we had any agenda.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Mr. President.
Am I missing something? I know I'm not.
Councilman, I said proceed. I'm not, I'm not here to argue, and I'm not gonna do it tonight. I said proceed.
But, Mr. President, even though you the president, you done interrupted me twice, and that's a point of order. And you can do it, but don't act like I'm doing something wrong when I'm trying to speak. My train of thought done been disrupted three, four times.
Councilman, that was not what I was trying to do. You approved that you were wrong, and I'm not gonna let you identify me like that.
I could've said point of order. I don't like being given the flow, and then folks just do what they do. That's me.
Okay, so now I'm saying to you again.
That's just me, Ms. President.
And I understand that.
I'm very serious about my reputation and this.
So I'm saying, I'm saying for you to proceed on the issue, if you will do, sir.
I was on the issue. We on a separation. I said I wasn't gonna make a motion to approve it, and gonna vote no.
Okay.
And that's the speech I'm making, because when I finish, somebody gonna make a motion to approve it. And every vote I read, we been approve a contract for 19 million, we ain't even read.
I understand.
So I see what the handwriting on the wall. I just want to make it clear before they do it and limit me in a fact.
What's your point?
I know we didn't do this previously, but I thought that we had all agreed that a motion has to be on the floor, okay, for us to have discussion, because during the postponement, I mean, there was an hour went by, and there was no motion on the floor. So I believe a motion has to be on the floor before we enter into all this discussion.
But I believe a motion was on the floor, because we had actually voted on the master sk-
Finally it was.
Ma, ma, finished it. We had voted on the master, uh, resolution, and then we had, we had voted, there were some separations, and then we began discussion on those separations.
No.
And then once we get done discussion on those, discussing those separations, Councilwoman, then we, uh-
He's got.
Ms. President.
Approve.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Can you rule on her point of order, so I can proceed or not?
I'm asking you to proceed.
I hadn't heard the ruling on the point. The point she was making is this. She sat back in the committee room, no motion, and we let her go on and on. Now, I'm getting tired of the selective memory as to when we talk and can't talk. And I'm getting tired of it. I, I'm usually a nice guy to get along with. When they start competing, yeah, you gotta get that in order. I can't.
When you're, when you're speaking, just speak lower, because I'm, I, I, I'm, I can't, I can't focus when I'm trying to listen to one speaker, and then I got others now. Come on, let's, because we need to go ahead and get this business taken care of and get out of here.
I agree.
Proceed, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, it's proper to call order. It's proper, it's proper to call order when a colleague vote, and somebody try to change the vote in the middle of the vote.
Point of information. I did not try to change his vote. I said, are you sure you know what the motion is for? Did not say a word about voting, so let's.
Go ahead.
Who is her point of information to? Me, or is it to you? Because I'll respond to the point of information. I didn't say her nobody's name.
Councilman, I want you to, wait a minute.
If she felt guilty.
Councilman, I want us to start focusing on-
It done started. It's too late.
But I, but I want to-
The train done left the station.
No, 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 it's not gonna be too late. It's definitely not gonna be too late. But here's what I want you to do. I want you to-
They interrupting me, Mr. President, and you is too.
I'm trying to get you to get back on. You said you wanted to talk about your separations, and I'm telling you to go proceed.
Ms. President, from the time I called Mr. Newsom up and Mr. Hicks, I was kind to folks.
Mm-hmm.
I been interrupted, dealt with, yield the flow, just because. I'm easy guy to get along with, but that's gonna stop. I'm not gonna be a part of a council that want to vote on contracts new council members ain't read, don't want to do stuff a certain way, glad and laughing like it's a competition. I ain't here to compete with colleagues on foolishness. And voting on contracts that ain't been read for $19 million is foolishness. I won't be a part of it. We ain't under no time crunch. Anybody make a motion, it's been separated. I'll be voting no. It's a sad day in the City of Flint on this council. And I'm wishing would keep order on that side of the room when I'm talking, because it was outrageous a second ago. And Ms. Worthing said a point of information when I talked about roll call votes and what was happening. Maybe she felt guilty, because in fact, she was the one who I was referring to, but I didn't say no name. She did the point of information. We not blind. I'm smart. I'm not Stevie Wonder Ray Charles, and I ain't deaf. I can hear it and see it when Mr. Griggs vote. Now, Mr. Griggs grown, but this has happened repeatedly with Mr. Griggs and Worthing there. Just repeated.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Uh, uh, what are we doing? The motion?
I know what I'm doing.
Are we just letting him go on?
Wait, 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 now she's got a point of order. I gotta-
For another hour of overtime.
Well, I'm getting ready to address your point of order. You, you call a point of order, and then you gotta let me tell you what it, what, respond to. And that doesn't have anything to do, you just had a point of, Councilwoman, you just said point of order. Now, would you, when I, and I ask you what your point of order, and you ask the question, I'm getting ready to respond to your point of order. We are supposed to be discussing the, uh, the, the, uh, separations. That was your point of order. You said, what are we, what are we supposed to be discussing? Is that what you not asking?
There's no motion.
You didn't ask me about a motion. You asked me, what were we supposed to be discussing? And I said this, the, uh, uh, separation. Councilman Mays has two separations. We decided that we were not going to send them back to committee. That was the vote. And now he's talking, he's, he's back on the separation, saying that he's not going to, uh, he's not going to approve it. Proceed.
Ms. President, and I might be done if it was not for all these unlawful interruptions, particularly now by Ms. Worthing. The rules say that if you use point of orders and point of informations continuously to take the flow and make comments, in this case, she trying to defend herself, it don't say may be removed, it say shall be removed. Shall, meaning must. Now, she using point of information and point of order, because she don't like what I'm saying, to get the flow and defend herself. Wait to get the flow and defend yourself, if you can do it. Because clearly, I'm watching what's going on across the aisle. It's happening repeatedly during roll call votes. You don't get the, you don't use point of orders and point of informations to get the flow to defend yourself on the truth, because it say when you do that, you shall be removed. It don't say may, it say shall. Now, I know when somebody think they know the rules and being slick to make statements. A point of order ain't no statement to defend myself. A point of order, a point of information is just what they is. Don't abuse it. My point has been made. $19 million contract, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't say nothing, Ms. Galloway. Remember the rules when they check me and say you couldn't talk to the TV and your constituents. Address the council. But I heard you talking to your constituents. I just let it go. They gonna let it go, because they only discriminate against me when I talk to the audience. Remember the vote, and who voted. You must address the council. Hell, I'll talk to the police, I'll talk to the people, and then get removed talking to the people. But just so y'all know, I'm tired of y'all picking and choosing on these rules. Ms. Fields sat back there and talked, no motion on the floor. Now, all of a sudden, yeah, remember what we decided. I remember every time, ain't gonna remember against y'all. I been trying to let y'all be good. Davina, you will lose that. Remember what we talked about. They ain't gonna act right. They gonna discriminate toward me. But don't see what they do. Here she sitting back there talking and talking, no motion on the floor. But when I do it, remember what we decided.
Are you, are you, uh?
You trying to push a $19 million garbage contract through and don't know the details to prove that you can put five votes over me.
Oh, yeah.
Do it. Same thing the other council used to do. Foolishness, and watch what's gonna happen. You don't vote on no $19 million contract and ain't read it. Thank you, Ms. President. I'll be voting no.
Okay.
And, and, and they will bring me contracts from now.
Councilwoman Fields.
I would like to make a motion to approve item number 1-805-40 and 1-805-44.
There is a motion on the floor to approve 1-80540, 1-80544. Is there, is there support for that motion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman?
I support that.
There is, it has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Me.
Councilwoman, uh, Worthing.
I call for a question.
Point of order, Ms. President.
What's your point?
The call for the question is proper if the discussion has went on long. The discussion ain't even started. That's an abuse of the call of the question. That's not the intent of it. I've ruled, I, I say it's out of order.
Uh, I disagree. We've been discussing this for hours. There was just no motion.
Point of order, Mr. President. You ruling on my point of order, and you letting her talk? We ain't there yet.
Okay, I, 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 I would really like to have some discussion. And Davina, since we're discussing, we're getting ready to discuss these two motions being sent, 1-80540, 1-80544. And I'd like for you to put a clock on everybody that's speaking. We, we, I agree, we have talked about it enough. We're not gonna say anything that we haven't already said. Is there any discussion? I see Councilwoman Galloway.
Huey, I just have a quick question for you. Um, I was just reading, it says aggregate total. And so is that aggregate total from the, when it was entered into 16 through 21? So technically, that amount would be divided over five years?
So, yeah, you could do it that way, the way I do it is, the, the, the incremental amount is the 12, not the 19. So the total amount of business that we would have done with, with, uh, Republic, which will be over five years, would be the 19. You are correct.
Perfect. And, and that lines up, Gary, with what you guys have in the big. So I'm glad I looked at the act.
No problem.
Ms. President.
Councilman Mays, and then Councilman Garrett.
Yeah, I would move to separate them.
Okay, it's been moved to separate 1-80-
Well, I'm asking that they be separated. I don't have to vote on two things at one time on a final vote. Never do.
Okay. It's been, it's been, you asking that we, we separate them?
That's correct.
Ms. President.
Now, if it take a motion.
What's your point?
You, you have to do that in a, some type of substitute or division of the question. You can't ask to have them separated when there's a motion on the floor for both of them.
So you're asking him to put that in the form of a motion and be accepted, as a, or as a substitute motion?
I'm just saying procedurally, you can't do it that way.
Okay, all right. Councilman?
Ms. President.
Councilman.
Um, that's what I was saying. If I have to do a substitute motion, I pause for her point of order. I'm asking that they be voted on separately.
So that's your substitute motion?
Yeah, I move to separate.
Okay, there's a substitute motion that we separate them. Is there support for that motion, Councilman Davis?
Mr. President.
Yeah. Yes.
I'd second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing, uh, Madam Clerk.
Point of information. Which one is we voting on first?
We're voting on to separate 1-805-40. That's the first, that was the first separation. Yeah.
So, you're voting to separate each one, to vote on each one separately?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
This is for separation?
Yes.
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Vote is, uh, four yes, five no.
Okay.
Mr. President.
So, back to our original motion, motion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
That takes us back to the original motion to approve both actions at one time.
Right.
I mean, it's not un-presided. We do it in the master resolution, but I've never seen colleagues deny a separate vote, whether it's appointees or resolutions. So, it's some good precedent being set here tonight. I love precedent.
Okay.
It's some precedent to vote on contracts without reading them and seeing them. It's a precedent not to separate, and I'm watching the folks and who's doing it. So, the courtesy for Councilman Mays to colleagues, they can say what they want. Well, when he lose the vote, he get met. Not when I'm taking care of this.
Point of order.
What's your point?
There's threats being made and mocking.
Councilwoman, he's not threatening. I haven't heard a threat. He's explaining what's happening. Proceed, Councilman Mays. Please wrap up so we can go ahead and get this vote out the way. Go ahead.
I'm gonna say this, Mr. President. I'm here for business, and I thank the community know me by now, and what's gonna happen is Ms. Worthing barking up the wrong tree. This council is barking up the wrong tree. What you say, Ms. Worthing?
No, 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 no.
No, I wanna know what she said because if you wanna act a fool, I can act a better fool.
Councilman Mays, we're not gonna do that.
See, I love politics and ignorance.
Councilman Mays, hold on just.
I love ignorant folks.
Councilman Mays.
What did she say?
It's not, it's not.
I wanna know what she said since she wanna talk out loud. I want you to warn her and ask to remove her. She acting a fool today, and you letting it go.
Councilman Mays.
Now, you want me to act a fool to the point that you warned me and wanna remove me cause she doing it?
Well, it's, it's.
What you gonna do with her ass?
Councilman Mays, that's your first warning. Now, you know that.
You can, y'all can have this doggone counsel. You warning me, but don't warn that white lady. You gone too. I'm done with it for today because when I see white folks.
Councilman Mays, we're out of order.
And I appeal to you to deal with her ass, and you don't. I'm done with you and her today.
Where, where's, uh, where's Officer Metcalf?
I'll appeal your ruling, and you can keep calling until we discuss the appeal. Let me do this right in my chair. I'll appeal the ruling of the chair.
Officer Metcalf.
I appeal the ruling of the chair for not checking that white lady. That's my appeal. Since y'all wanna be so smart and discriminatory, I appeal the ruling.
I would like for you to move Councilman Mays from these chambers.
You gonna entertain my appeal, particularly if it's second, Winfrey Carter or anybody else. Now, let's see what you gonna do. You, your job is to say it's their second to the appeal, cause when you remove me and I'm appealing, you ain't recognizing, you gonna get sued personally and city.
Officer Metcalf, we have a council person that I've ruled out of order.
And I'm appealing your ruling.
I'm asking you to remove him.
So, I'm appealing your ruling. And your job is to say it's their second, and if you don't, I'm suing you. There's an appeal to the ruling of the chair. What's your job, Mr. Chairman?
I would like for you to move him now.
Don't let white folks discriminate and treat me. Do your damn job. Keep off my ass. Do your damn job. Remove her ass.
Remove him now. He's out of order.
You out of order.
And he's not, and he's not gonna stay here.
She out of order. Kate Fields out of order. Use a damn food. It's always the black man. Remove her white ass. Remove her white ass out of order with your hate that she had, black man. I told you if don't have a fooling with me, then she setting up that mess and you're black.
If you don't, if you need, if you need somebody else to pull him out of here, get you some, get you some help.
I'm gonna get you out of here. Let these white folks fool you. I'm gonna get you out of here. You across the line, big bad man. Shut her ass up. That's what's on that. I don't play with y'all. There's power out to you. And you brought a poor, angry Tuesday.
And to all of my constituents that are here, I apologize to you, and to my colleagues, I apologize to you as well. Now, as we, Madam Clerk, we're back on voting for these.
Voting for 1-805-40.
And 1-80.
0544.
Yes. Say again?
We still in discussion?
We were, I thought we finished discussing. I didn't hear any other discussions. So, go right ahead, Ms., Madam Clerk.
With the roll call?
Yes.
And Mr. Griggs?
To approve these contracts.
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
The vote is seven yes, one no.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I think there was one more separated that.
There is.
I'd like to move.
It's, it's my separation, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
You can move it, though, and I, I'd like discussion first.
Councilwoman.
Okay, I would like to move 1-805-42 for approval.
1-805-42 for approval. Is there, there's a motion on the floor, Councilwoman, Councilman Davis?
Mr. President, I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I just had a quick question. Mr. Newsom, I know, I know that we already approved this, and this is just a budget amendment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, can you just briefly tell me how do budget amendments work? Should we approve these and then wait for another budget amendment? I just wanna get some.
The way it should normally work, if everything is working with the departments, we'll amend the budget in conjunction with, or in advance of an appropriation, or, and, you know, obviously, we also need budget amendments to change the payroll, increase the number of positions, right? So, it's not just money, but it's also positions, which of course leads to money. The way it should work is budget amendments should come with or in conjunction with a, um, in conjunction with a, um, procurement. That was the reason why you, you saw, I believe it's 441 come with 444, which was the budget amendment to fund the contract for this year in addition to the actual contract itself for the.
I, I simply wanted that to be discussed because it, it, there's not a consistency.
See, yeah, we're.
And that's why, and like I said, I know that we already approved this.
Yes.
I just wanted that information to be expressed, and so I'm good.
And just so you're clear, even if we, for whatever reason, fail to see that there's a budget amendment needed, we can't go into, the system won't allow us to go in and do a purchase order.
Right.
Without budget. And sometimes that's the reason it comes to you after the fact, because that's the check that signals the need to come to this body. So, just to clarify.
Any other discussion? Councilwoman Fields?
Just real quickly, I just wanna mention, since this is to pay for a service, to provide people that have certain licenses and whatever, I sent to, um, quite a few people, the Michigan Municipal League notice about their, um, I don't think it's a job fair, but they have an ongoing classified ads for positions, and I did receive a response from Mr. Newsom cause I mean, there's quite a few positions, and I hope, Mr. Binzek, I hope I'd sent it to you as well. Uh, but I hope HR is taking note of that, and in the future, we can fill these positions because we know we're paying more for these people and these positions than we would if they were employees. That's all.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no on 1-805-42.
That brings us, uh, Madam Clerk, to liquor license.
We have none.
Introduction of the first and second reading, first, first, first reading of ordinances?
None.
Introduction of first reading of ordinances. It says maybe, um.
The ones listed on the agenda was postponed back to committee.
Okay.
Let's have six.
Second reading and adoption?
None.
And then it was requested that we add something to the council, which was additional council discussion? That was request at the, at the, at the onset. That was something that Councilman Mays requested. Okay.
I had something. He did it, but I'll wait.
Okay. So, then we're at final council comments, and we will start with Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make it short as possible. I'm hoping soon as possible, we could entertain the thought of a council rules committee soon as possible. Uh, and also, far as the Republic deal, I understand nineteen million dollars in the increase of taxes is just about unforbidden when your income didn't increase. But the services that we have, we can't afford, uh, I'm sure we already at a bottom dollar price, uh, having that to CFO, Mr. Newsom, he don't play with numbers. So, I'm sure he got it lean as possible as well as Republic. But I just hope that they can see in theirself to do a little bit more and above, along with the blight as well as land bank, to consider removing the other blight, whether it be dumping or whatever, that we can kind of be more consistent across the community, the whole city, not just my ward, with removing all blight out the city of Flint, and I'm done.
Councilman Garrett?
Yeah, I too. I'm looking forward to the Rules Committee, uh, finally meet and maybe, um, edit some of the rules we currently have and/or add new ones, um, to that. Um, I hope that all residents are staying warm out there with the weather being safe, and, uh, there's fifteen days, I believe, or something like that to the next election cycle, so I encourage everybody to do their research on the candidates and the proposals, and, uh, get out there and vote, um, regardless of who you're voting for. I just encourage you to get out there and vote. Um, thank you.
Councilwoman Fields?
I'd just like to say, first of all, I'd like to offer an apology to, um, our representative from our vendor, Republic. Um, that was a very hostile meeting. I'm sorry, um, he was put through that in that manner because he has always been just uber polite and, and civil with myself and anyone I know him to be in contact with. I'd also like to say, I'm sorry to the residents out there who are watching this, that they had to observe this kind of behavior. It, it's really sad when a council person just cannot control their own behavior, and I think that's one of the reasons why we have so few people who come down to council meetings anymore. But I would like to thank those citizens who did come down and remain, uh, despite the poor behavior and conduct, and, uh, we'll keep hoping that, uh, that will improve, and we can get back to some type of professionalism and stability. Thank you.
Councilwoman Winfrey Carter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, for Gary, Mr., um, for, um, Republic, I'm sorry, Republic, Gary, um, I do wanna say that, yes, I did want this to go back to committee because I think that, um, Republic, nineteen million dollars, I think you do owe the citizens of this community, the citizens of Flint, you know, a breakdown of your services. So, I would like to make a referral that we, um, have Republic back to committee for like a special order, so we can talk about the contract and talk about the, um, services that Republic renders, okay?
Now, what committee are you, you're asking that to be in?
Um. Probably governmental. And maybe that, maybe that can happen, um, soon. Before the new contract starts. Thank you.
Councilwoman Galloway?
Thank you. Um, and, and I did vote no, and Gary, I do support you. One of the things that I'm, I'm hoping is, um, I, I, I wanna see how that increase looks. I know that, um, Huey said he hoped that the cap would only be twenty-one dollars, but he doesn't really, it wasn't really clarified for me. Um, I wanna say thank you, Gary. You, you always respond to me. Um, there are a lot of constituents that I get information late from, though. They don't think to call me because they call your customer service number, and they're waiting for that customer service number to respond to them, and then when it doesn't, then they finally respond to me. And so, um, I, I, I wanted to, to mention that. And I'm hoping now, because based on the aggregate, you guys are right where you were when you bid on the five-year contract, so hopefully that will cause you to have the ability to increase your staff. Um, because I don't, you guys spoiled us. Before that Rizzo thing happened, trash pickup was not as delayed. We didn't see trash on the curb, at least where I live. It might be, you know, might not be a lot of, um, as much blight maybe, but we didn't see trash on the curb at four and five o'clock in the afternoon. And I know you guys are getting better, cause I came home last, um, Thursday, and it was already gone. So, thank you, and I just wanted you to know why I didn't support it. I'm concerned about the increase. I know we have to make increases, but it's a very trying time. People can't afford their water bills right now. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Griggs?
Uh, to the public that was able to stomach this meeting this long, please vote November 6. Thanks.
Councilwoman Worthing?
I, uh, do think that we should make landlords accountable for this garbage that's left. I mean, I've seen it many times. A person moves, or maybe they're evicted, um, there is just trash everywhere, and I'm surprised it gets picked up, to be honest. So, in order to lessen fees and an increase for all of us, they should be paying those extras, and, and there are so many things that we need to enforce with landlords that we are not doing in the city of Flint. So, I do think we need to have a conversation on that, and maybe I'll put that, um, on the agenda for legislative, but we are not enforcing, um, some of these, uh, ordinances that we already have, and, and this one, I think we need to create a new one, uh, to, to make sure that they pay these extra fees and fines, so we're not paying for someone else's, uh, garbage to be picked up. Um, but thank you for, uh, holding certain council members accountable for their actions today, Mr. President.
I'm gonna start holding everybody accountable for their actions. Did we get you, Mr. Davis? We got you? Again, to all of our constituents out there, I wanna apologize for the behavior, and, uh, this is just not, this is not good. But sometimes you, you have to do, you have to use, let the, uh, rules of the council apply, and, uh, we try to be lenient where we can. We always try to be fair, but, uh, there are certain things that we just can't let go. So, with that, to my colleagues, uh, I will see you Wednesday? And then we have a, our next committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, November the 7th, regular committee meeting, Wednesday, November the 7th, followed by a council meeting, uh, regular council meeting on November the 12th. Okay, with that.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is there a second? Uh, Mr. Griggs, you, you really wanna second that motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign?
City of Flint City Council Meeting, sponsored by the Flint City Council. Broadcasting on WFV ninety-two point one LPFM Flint on Sundays from noon to noon. And on YouTube, a livestream sponsored by the Flint Pipe Fitters Union, locals three-seventies, encouraging us to hire local. Facebook livestream sponsored by the Paul H. and Angela R. Herring Fund, determined Thank you for watching.